Okay, we better start the meeting then. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, Jane McGinnis is here, Dawn Webb's here, Mike Ridley's here, Mike Sherfney's here. Apsen is John Shams, he had to go to the doctor, he's got some issues, so. And Kelly is still downstate, hopefully she'll be back next month, so. Okay, any board comments on the agenda items? The one item I put on here that Mr. Kramer had asked me to put on there, and he was gonna discuss it today, was a sewer support letter. He's trying to get some more grants through Governor, not Governor, but Senator Stavino's office, and, and, what's the other guy?
Senator Peters.
Senator Peters, yeah, I remember. So they wanted some support letters, so Bob was gonna talk about it today. It's not something we're gonna do today, but he's gonna ask like BLPA and a lot of the businesses to give them support letters to help them get their grants, so. He said he was gonna be here to talk about it, so. That's why that's on there, so. Anything else from the board? Comments about the agenda?
Nope.
Okay. Public comments about our agenda today?
How do we know what your agenda is?
I keep finding my hands up on the table.
I'll read it to you.
It's the need-to-know basis.
Denise Klein from Nemcog is here to talk about the master plan chapters and the survey results. We're gonna discuss a capital improvement plan.
Sorry.
Discuss a member vacancy, discuss a workshop date, a sewer support letter, then our public comment board comment and adjournment.
I have extra on, do you want extra?
No.
Yeah.
This is more paper.
Okay, so, no public comments other than Sally asking for an agenda? That's easy enough. Okay, so, let's turn our attention to Denise Klein from Nemcog. She's gonna review the master plan chapters and the survey results, so Denise, go ahead.
Alright, so we should have chapter two, that's the first one that we really have a complete chapter of, that's the socioeconomic data, and then the survey results, which I know you already went over, so I'm not gonna redo it because you've already looked at it, so just kinda tell you.
And it's out there on the website, too, people wanna look at it, right?
So I do have a really quick question before you get started. What's chapter one?
So chapter, so I do have it out of order.
Alright.
So chapter one is just your introductory chapter, so I always do this one first because the data just came out for all of us, so I, I don't know. I feel like it's important to look at your statistics as we're doing your goals. So those other chapters, like, chapter one is just an introduction and like the status of planning here. Chapter three is usually your community services, chapter four is natural resources and stuff. So, I mean, those are more background, so like, they're not gonna necessarily factor in specifically to your goals, so I try to get the stuff done that's gonna factor right into what goals you guys set. So that's what I hope to do today, is I wanna just talk about each of these things, the socioeconomic data and the survey results, and kinda brainstorm. You guys tell me what you're seeing that you wanna focus on with your goals and objectives, so that's the purpose of it, isn't, I'm not presenting like, oh, here's the data, I mean, you can see the data. So it's more like, let's go through it and point out what's significant that we need to make sure we address in the goals and objectives. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. So I'll just start with the socioeconomic data. I will say, so, if you looked at the bottom of all those tables, you'll see they come from different data sources, okay? If you remember when we all answered the census, the census doesn't, this 10-year census doesn't ask that many questions anymore, right? It's very short, the census is very short. So you don't get a lot of the data that you used to with the 10-year census. So you'll see, whenever you see a table that says, you know, American Community Survey five-year estimates, that's the data that the census doesn't ask anymore, so you have to go, that's why you're seeing those. So what I did is I pulled the 2021 Census American Community Survey five-year estimates, the five years, so what they do is they take the last five years of data, and then they combine that, and those surveys are sent randomly. I don't know, has anybody ever received one, an American Community Survey in the mail?
Roll call.
Who knows?
I received one for the first, I'm using this data for years, and I received one for the first time like last year, which, and it goes into detail, I mean, about, you know, like, income, income sources, what's your house worth, how many rooms do you have, what do you heat with, I mean, that's the type of stuff that they gather in those. So it's usually pretty close to being accurate in terms of like what you might get with the census. However, 2020 was a weird year, okay? So the census did put out a statement that said, "We aren't confident of our data quality right now," because things, 2020 really messed things up, okay? So this census was a little wonky, but especially the American Community Survey, they just didn't have the confidence in that. So you have this weird year in those five years, that's why I'm saying. Take it with a grain of salt what we're seeing, and that this is all we have to work with, unfortunately, but take it with a grain of salt that there's a weird year in that five-year period that they're putting that estimate together for, okay? So, and then other data, like data that we get in the state of Michigan, where you get, wherever you see, I think, I think I called it labor market initiatives data, or Michigan Department of Treasury, that's all accurate, but it's that, it's the 2020 American Community Survey that's a little weird, so just know that. So let's just kinda go through this chapter, and we'll just, you know, again, I'm not presenting to you, this was more of a back and forth, like, what are we seeing here that either surprises us or we think is significant in these data results? So, first page just showing how this county compares with the surrounding counties, you can still see that, you know, even though a lot of people moved up here, right, during COVID, still negative numbers there. But, but again, some of these things were, that data was collected not necessarily, so people might have been moving up after the fact, okay? So that's why, that's another one of those things where I got totally confident in the population numbers like that because I think a lot of people moved in 2021 as well.
Like Tusker or township in the Sheboygan, this county, you know, ministry population, we went up like 42 people.
But I'll bet you went out more than that actually.
Well, even, you know, with the election, you looked at the number of people that voted this time, and a lot of it, I think, does explain too, are people that had two residents, but they had their voting residents up here, but we're about the, one of the only townships that had an increase in population, and that needs to be looked at.
Yep, look at all those negatives, some of them were quite, actually way higher in terms of negatives.
Yeah.
Looks like, who was the biggest gain?
Well, Nunde.
The county?
Where's Nunde?
That's over there.
On the next page, she's looking at the next graph.
They're a double, they're a double township though. Nunde's a double township.
Okay.
But they had 100, yeah, they had quite a few people, 153 people.
Yep, and you can see, you know, so I tried to, I tried to include the oldest data that, you know, is, that makes sense to include, so we're looking at 2010 through 2020. And then if you look at the next one, we've got, so this is where I want you to start thinking, like, as we go into our goals and objectives, you know, this is how do you break down in terms of population by age, right? And we put all them, so the reason I put all of the townships in there is I want you to see, you know, how you guys compare to the other townships in terms of age. So obviously, most of your population is 65-plus. I mean, that's pretty common, I mean, you guys are higher, not the highest in that category, but.
Well, Burke Township's got roughly 40%.
Well, I'm gonna agree with that because I saw the same number, so when I, out of the qualified voter file, when I looked at voters by age bracket.
It's 65-plus.
And it's no surprise to see this.
Yep, your, yeah, the younger generation is not, not here, if you look at the 5 to 19, that's, that's way lower than most of the other townships.
Well, over 60% of our population is over 45 years old, and I gotta believe most of those are probably over 50.
And that's not, that shouldn't surprise you anyway.
No.
I mean, that's not a shocker, so.
Now, we're an old.
Well, I think it's a problem.
So there you go, so you're, so that's what I mean, let's point out, like, what do we need to focus on, then we start to write those goals, and I'm not asking you to write your goals today, but just, that's a, so, okay, so, I'm gonna make some notes as we go through this. Lack of the younger generation here, that's the issue that we wanna make sure we talk about.
Yeah, the question is, why are they leaving? Because they're, clearly they're leaving.
Yeah, there's gotta be some reasons that we can maybe help in the next 10-year plan, you know, increase the population, whether it's affordable housing, or more jobs, or whatever, there's gotta be some reasons to do, bring them back or keep them here.
Yep. Then the next page, well, the graph is just showing that data graphically, so you can kinda just see the colored, you know, the colored bars showing how it breaks out. And then median age, this one always gets me, and this is all, all over northeast Michigan. Look at how it compares to the US. US, your median age is 53.7, the US is 38.8, and that's all over the place up here. I mean, that's not, you're not unusual in that way. So, matter of fact, I've got one, I've got one township that is way higher than that for their median age. They did their survey at the same time as you, and they were just shocked at their results. So again, same, same, same conclusion, we got a problem, right, that we wanna make sure we address.
So this is, am I on the wrong page? No, this is, this is counties though, right? The median age.
Yes, but I put your, I put your township in there, so it's counties.
Oh, 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 yep, okay.
Yep, that's comparing the counties, but I wanted to show you guys how you compare with all the, you know, I mean, we could do a median, so that's the other thing, is you tell me what you think is missing, like, if you would like to see a median age table for all the townships, I could add that. So, is that something that would be helpful to see how you compare, or?
Maybe not, I mean, it might be a good idea, just so we know, then we can figure out, why are they moving to the city of Sheboygan and not here? What, 'cause it's usually amenity-driven, right?
Okay. And then the next page, at page five, we've got trends in population, that's just showing how those age groups break down from 2010 to 2021. You can see, so look at that, 65, isn't that interesting? Your 65-plus, back in 2010, it was 20%, and now it's 31%. That's a major increase in 10 years.
Well, the same people are here, and they just got older?
They got older, or people came in.
I think it's retired.
It's retired.
They gotta remember the baby boom generation was the largest generation of everybody after all, too.
And my generation, I mean, just based on what I know from work, most of us had two homes, a lot of, a lot of your generation had two homes, one downstate or one down south, and there's still a lot of those people. We're not having two homes ever again in our lives, we're done.
I think most people like that, too.
So the other thing about this graph that stands out to me is the 20 to 24, so we said it's pretty low, but it's not as low as it was in 2010, so you have gained there, actually. So that's interesting. Then, so that's, that's really all there is about age. The gender thing, the gender table, that doesn't really tell you anything other than there's, there's a few more men than women here, but.
Dang it.
It's pretty split.
Yeah, it is, almost 48 to 52, so that's pretty close, males, women are taking over, right?
We gotta power about this.
So then, on the next page, you're seeing, and I don't, I don't know where this, how they do the population projections, this is the state of Michigan that does the population projection, they do not do it by township, okay, the smallest unit they go, they do that for is a county. But look at, you can see Sheboygan County is going, that's what they're projecting. Then they do a population projection by age, and, I mean, it's kinda, it's, 0 to 39 basically, I mean, it's downward, but it's not that, it's not that steep of a, of a drop-off, actually those are pretty straight lines for by age. And then, next page, this, this doesn't surprise you, the fact that, you know, the majority of population here is white. You have gone up in minority populations from 2010, your total was 3.8, now it's 8.7, so that has gone up, looks like.
Most of that is mixed races.
Yeah, two or more races, 'cause they, yep, they can, they can choose if they've got two or more races in their background. They didn't used to be, they didn't used to have that in the census, it used to, you had to pick one, and so they changed that, so.
Yeah, that's the biggest increase in the minorities, I guess.
Yep. So disability status, this to me is an important one, as you're planning for facilities and things, so if you look at, and again, I thought it was important, it was, it's kind of a heavy table, I apologize for that, but I wanted to show how you rank with all the townships in terms of people with disabilities. Okay, so, let's see, we've got, this comes from American Community Survey, okay, so you have, actually, kind of a high number, I think, percentage-wise, of people 0 to 17 with a disability compared to some of the other, it looks like Waverly's really high.
Actually Benton's higher than us, well, 0 to 17, Benton's higher than us, and they're probably pretty similar to. 0 to 17, 52 percent, 52 people.
52 people, this gets breaks it down by number of people and then percentage of population.
I'm looking at the number, oh, I'm looking at the number of people, so 0 to 17.
Yeah, we're like second, Waverly's got quite a bit.
You're, you're pretty high on the 18 to 64, category two, not that much higher, but, you know, it's pretty high.
Yeah, it is.
And then, you're pretty high, you're actually pretty high all around, across the board.
But other than the city of Sheboygan, I think we must have the second highest population in the county anyway, so, so some of these, you know, they're not.
If you look at.
Weighted, like Waverly has a couple, you know, they're a small township, but they have, you know, it takes three or four people to increase their.
Yep, it doesn't take that many. So that's something that I guess to think about as we look towards.
Yeah, the handicap and what we could do, yeah.
Yep, you have it, you have a high percentage.
I think we're always looking at that, but that's something that, that's a federal law, too, that we have to follow.
We're third, population-wise, we're third. Benton's got, Benton's higher than us, so Sheboygan City, Sheboygan, Benton, and then us.
Yep.
So what is the definition when it says disabled? Because it says over one quarter of the person 65 and over are disabled, what, I mean.
How, how do they, how do the American Community?
Am I disabled because I don't walk as much, or I've got arthritis?
I would have to look that up, I would have to look up what.
There's sources, you know, there's disabled or there's disabled.
For my wife.
There's gotta be a lot of sources, because you can have, like, I know, one of the things, we have people who lived and worked a full career, retired, and now have a veteran's 100% disabled, so I mean, it may show up there, I have a son who's disabled, or he receives aid because he's autistic.
Right.
So I don't know where they're snatching these things, if they're.
Well, that's.
Well, it's self-reported, so it's, it's American Community Survey, so it's, they're self-reporting if they're disabled, so it's not coming from any.
So this comes from that American survey?
American Community Survey, right.
Okay, so that could be.
So that somebody could say, yeah, I have a problem walking, so.
Because I would say they went to the Secretary of State and pulled off the handicap, you know, plates and stickers for this town.
But then it would miss, like, you said, like autism, so that, then it would miss that type of thing.
Yeah, so this really.
You gotta be snatching them from a lot of different places.
Well, this, this table comes from their self-reported disability.
Yeah, see that.
So in other words, you filled out a survey and sent it into that.
Yes, I have a.
Maybe.
Maybe, I don't, I don't recall.
Yeah, so I mean, to me, it's not.
That's where you get the worthy information.
It's not a reliable survey, so I would spend a whole lot of time on that.
Well, do they claim a disability on their federal tax return? You know, that's.
Well, we don't know, she's saying it comes from the American survey.
Right, knowing that, I've filled those out before, they're asking you, you know, do, does anyone in your household or, you know, have a cognitive disability? And I have the same thing, I have autistic son, so, yes, so then they would ask the H. So it's, it's me reporting that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, again, you gotta take all this data with a grain of salt, even, even the census data, it's all self-reported, so it's not so good, it's not.
I really felt during 2020, I, we were talking about, we thought the population in Tusker would go up 500 people, I mean, 'cause we just saw so many people coming up here, and finding out that that was, a lot of people found out that, and corporations have found out that working from home is much more productive, so I was thinking, how many people might relocate here, and it didn't show anything, but I thought it would show.
Well, yeah, but there's a reason for that, because at the same time in 2020, we were working on trying to get broadband expanded, and we still have an issue with broadband, that is the biggest, that is the biggest drawback to work from home.
So basically, what you're seeing overall, these statistics may or may not be really accurate, because 2020 was not a good year to take the census.
Take the operative word.
So I was just giving you a trend, I wouldn't be looking at it to pretend this, you know, I wouldn't look at the percentages so much, but just a guide, I wouldn't, like, educational thing.
Yeah, I mean, it's not completely, like, way off here, and you're actually way over here, it's, but, just, there's a range probably of what, you know, is accurate.
I think your operative word was wonky.
Yeah.
When you said, and I just think.
It was wonky. I mean, they had, I know somebody that was helping with the, with the actual census, with the 10-year census, and they said it was terrible.
Yeah.
It was, I mean, not only just disorganized, but just terrible.
So where do they get the statistics for the educational?
That's from the five-year estimate, so that's that same survey.
Okay, so.
Right, so they will ask about the education of everybody in your family.
So that's a very, probably a small sampling of people.
It is, but usually it comes out pretty accurate to when, it's pretty accurate, but again, you got that 2020 year in yours, unfortunately. I mean, it's not just you, everybody that's looking at this data right now has 2020 to deal with, okay? So yeah, your education, obviously people that claim, you know, that live here, that say they have a graduate or professional degree, way up, so that went way up.
Uh huh.
Because people coming up and working from home?
Yep, yep.
Are people retiring.
Retiring, right.
So that's the biggest, that's the biggest thing out of that table.
Yeah.
And then, on the next page, it's just showing how you compare to the county and to the state and to the US, okay? So the county is much lower in terms of graduate degree, you can see. They're much higher in, so you, so you guys are more educated, your, your, your community is, has a higher education level. The US, you're higher than that, too, actually, you're the highest out of all of them, you're higher than the state as well.
We got a lot of smart people up here.
And they all sit on the planning commission, right?
And then the next page is just showing a snapshot of all of the townships and all municipalities here, and how they break down in terms of whether they have a high school degree versus, you know, or higher bachelor's degree.
I mean, that's nice to know, but I don't know if it's something we would use in our plan.
No, I don't think.
Age, or, you know, education-wise, you know, you're gonna build a.
So now housing.
Certain things for highly educated people, like a planetarium or something, or.
I don't think you're gonna be building.
No, no, we wouldn't do that, so.
So housing is on the next couple of pages.
This is what I'm interested in, more than anything, I think, probably Mr. Kramer's too, but.
The first table is showing, you know, the counties, how does this county compares to the counties surrounding you? 33%, this is showing in 2021, this is for the whole county, 3%, 33% seasonal housing.
Seasonal housing.
Look at Mount Morencie.
So they're saying 50%.
Why in Mount Morencie? What's in Mount Morencie that's drawing seasonal? Black Lake, is that in Mount?
I don't know, I mean, I know it's in Mount Morencie, I just don't know what is there.
Yeah, the bunch of small, I just wonder those cabin, a lot of cabins.
And they're at 50%, 50% of their homes.
I think Mount Morencie is the most sparsely populated county in the local.
Yeah, like I said, they probably maybe 100 people, and 30 of them have, you know, seasonal homes, so we give them, you know, 50% or whatever, so.
So you can see, and then, so this shows you a little bit, the table on the bottom of the page is the township, so how you break down in terms of, you know, total housing units, whether they're occupied, owner-occupied, you know, obviously you're, this says 82%. Actually, that's a little bit lower than you were in 2010 in terms of owner-occupied, which doesn't surprise me at all. Your persons per household went down a little bit, not much, says you have 837 seasonal units.
You know, the one thing that surprised me, and I don't know where these are all at, is that we have 950 total vacant union, units in this township. Where's that 950 houses around here, apartments that people aren't living in?
I wouldn't believe that.
I don't know where they're located.
I don't think that's accurate, no.
No, that's what I said, I haven't seen, I know, we'd be looking tomorrow, putting people in them, so.
That would solve all our problems.
A lot of our problems, yeah.
So then, the next page is just showing how that same data compares to all of the municipalities.
Where does, so back to that, where does that information come from?
That's that same survey.
Okay. The census. Okay, so, 'cause when you say 950 vacant units, I'm thinking when Bobby did the one report for me that was picking out pole barns.
No, this is housing, this is housing, nothing to do with.
That's the other thing, you have that data here.
Living.
In terms of occupied versus vacant, so we can.
Well, she can get it.
You can, you can get it off the assessing, if you, if you make the idea of a, you know, true project, then you take, take your pole buildings out, and then you take out, you can also take out your, your non-homesteaded, and you get an idea of where does somebody's second home.
Yep.
Yeah, I know she, I know she had, maybe Liz, somebody in Sheboygan ran the number, ran that for her. That seems like a black map.
I don't, I don't think that's, I don't trust that number.
Maybe during a certain month of the year, but I.
Alright, so let's say we want that, we're trying to get that from the township, so. Next page, if you flip over to page 14, again, same data source, that's the age of housing units, kinda breaks down, breaks out pretty evenly, actually. That's probably the most uniform graph I've seen for age of housing, so I don't, I don't see anything there that jumps out. Household income, so median household income, we're at 53,075, so you're kind of in the middle. You've got, Burke Township is way up there, 76,000.
Okay, you got Kinzo out of there.
Still way under, though, the state and the US median, median household income, always is, northeast Michigan is always.
So this take in like pensions and social security as far as the income?
Yeah, I didn't put the breakdown, so you can get that, too.
No, I assume that had a lot to do with it, 'cause an average person in this town, actually, a working person that's not retired or makes less than 54,000, I would assume, and that's, you know, if we had the working.
Is that household income though? That's household income.
Household, yeah.
I'd like to know what that Walker Township is, 75.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's weird.
I mean, you'd have to look at the breakdown of theirs, I think, to see, like, what's that income come from.
And a Brad Township is on Black Lake.
Well, isn't Walker over there in the Hudson, not Hudson Bay, but, or, where's all those condos there, east of Sheboygan?
Walker's right down.
But if you have a township.
Duncan Bay, isn't that where Duncan Bay is?
No, Walker Township is right up 68 here.
You mean Afton?
Yeah. No, Afton is Ellis, I think Ellis Township, Walker Township is down a little bit further in south.
Okay. Yeah, that surprises me.
The median means that there's as many above as there are below, and if you have a township with a low population.
Yeah.
But you've got one billionaire living there.
That would change, yeah, yeah.
Really, really, really.
If they live their full time, yeah. Now, Burke Township, I think, is what, the highest, 76,000.
Yeah. If you flip the page.
But when you look at, so, the only thing that I, the only issue that I have with that is that if you look at, a lot of times we confuse wealth with income, they're two different things. So if you look at, our age group is 65, there's probably a lot of wealth here, but low income, 'cause we're all retired. There's a lot of us that are retired, so I'm always real skeptical about.
Our, we all, this is always been difficult, 'cause our, our demographic is skewed because of, you can go right here, on the lake, just in this area, right here, and it's, it's very well-to-do, very affluent, but you're two houses back, you're, everybody's, a lot of people are hand-to-mouth and paycheck to paycheck, or fixed income, and it's, so it's, you know, we argue a lot with USDA and different people, saying, how do you, how do you, how do you equalize this? I dealt with Chris Maxwell on, on talking about the demographic of this, could we qualify if we go out and get our own data, own demographic data, and that was, I think we talked about that, Bob, at once about a time, about going out and hiring, 'cause it's, it's so skewed.
Yeah, it's skewed.
I'm gonna ask your EGLE to clarify if a disadvantaged community.
Well, even back in 2010, when the USDA came in here, and, you know, was offering us grant money just to do the downtown area in sewers, we were considered poverty level, under $20,000, and I still remember when the person came to one of our meetings and talked to us about, you qualify for a grant 'cause you're under $20,000 is the average income of this town, and it's below the poverty level.
It goes back to what I said. I don't have a lot of income, I have a lot of wealth.
Well, yeah.
Not spending my money.
But I mean, if you, it depends on what you look at here. But again, if it's total income, then yeah, people like us that are retired would probably, but then the average person, a worker here, and like Bob said, they, you know, we qualify for loans and grants because we're, you know, most people live here, it's under the, you know, poverty level, which I don't know what it is today, but back then it was twenty thousand dollars. Yeah, so.
So the next page shows the, well, the last table on median earnings is, your females are making more than males here, which is, I don't know, it normally doesn't sound like this.
I have no comment on that.
It's flipped for the county, though. If you take the whole county, it's the males making more than the females. Not much, though, it's pretty split.
That sounds right.
Um, and then their poverty is on the table, or the table right below that, so. And this is not surprising. It's always the, the female head of household, right? Female with children in the house, that's where you're always at the higher poverty level. And that number is, I've seen that same number, something around that same number for years.
Sixty-three percent.
But again, you see that all over the place. Much lower, obviously. It was a lot higher than the county, so. You go to the next page, this is where, this is where you start to get data from the state of Michigan. Okay, so we're out of the community survey now, and we're into state data. So I downloaded this off the Labor Market Initiative's website. So this is Michigan DTMB that gives, you know, your labor force data, actually, yeah, your, so, and then your unemployment. Okay, that, the big table that extends on to the next page, and then the graph is showing unemployment. You can see the graph, these are all the counties, and this comes, this is also a county. They don't break it down by township. Okay, so you have.
Yeah, because there's people that work all over the county, even working in Petaskey too.
So that's how they report it. You can see, the whole, all the counties on that, on that graph on page eighteen, you know, they're all kind of parallel on each other, aren't they?
Yeah.
Let's see, Sheboygan County is the dark blue line. So you're kind of right in the middle in terms of unemployment on that graph. You're that thick blue line.
Yeah, because Sheboygan County went from twelve point nine percent to eight percent in unemployment twenty twenty-two, just in the six months, I guess.
Yeah, you can see the, you see COVID here at the end of the graph. Everybody went way up and then dropped way down.
Okay, so that's a trend that's pretty much all over the country, I would think.
And look at how much higher it was, though, back in, you know, about two thousand and eight, nine.
Yep, that's when we went through the recession and.
Yep. Not here, though. Here, you went up higher during COVID. Some of the other counties, like, who's the red one? I guess that's Mount Morrisey. Yeah, that's Mount Morrisey. They're always highest in unemployment, so. And Ascot is the other one that's really high. Anyways, that's your employment numbers. And then the next page is breaking down employment sectors in terms of, again, county-level data is the most.
Well, that's pretty much what we thought anyways. You know, the retail trade's twenty-two percent, and the food service and accommodations are twenty-five percent, and the rest of them fall in. So we're, half of the workers here are retail or restaurants workers.
So that's probably not anything surprising.
No.
Construction.
The next page is showing wages. So this is the state tracking wages, average weekly wages, average number of, again, county, so you gotta think county here. Number of establishments, average employment, how many they employ. So it's always interesting to look at. Looks like in the county, people in the utilities field have the highest weekly wages. Looks like followed by state of Michigan employees, and then construction, oh no, yeah, construction, and then finance and insurance, and then federal government employees. Those are all the ones that are over a thousand dollars per week. And the state of Michigan does these surveys quarterly, so this is, this is the latest quarter that they had out. Okay, so this is quarterly data.
So where's this educational services? What is that? Because it's eighty-seven dollars? That's not teachers?
No, so.
I know there'd be.
The teachers are gonna be up in the local, you know, I think they're up under, I don't know, wait a minute. That's a good question. Let me write that down. Yeah, there's something, they're not in there. They're not in there.
Would that be like the cops out here, the inner school district that provides educational services to the schools? I mean, because it says there's only.
I don't know what that means.
Four of them.
There's only four of them. That's a good point.
And average employment is nine. I mean, it's not.
What's, so would it be under professional and technical services?
Like schoolteachers, yeah.
That's really weird. There's something wrong there, because it should be under number sixty-one. I hadn't, I didn't notice that.
Well, I think Don's right. Fifty-four would be professional and technical service. I mean, there's, that's the most next to retail trade. Most people, two hundred and eighty-nine people are in the professional and technical service.
Let me, I'm gonna look up a different quarter, and I wanna see what's.
And this is the whole county.
Yeah, this is county, yeah.
I haven't looked, I don't know for a fact, but I would assume that the schools, that the school system is the largest employer for us.
I'm gonna look that up. I wanna see what's.
Well, I know that and the county government is, too.
Is there something wrong with that quarter's data for education? Because that's not making sense. Okay.
Because I don't, did we see, is there a line for government even?
The government is at the top.
Three.
Oh, local government, okay. State, federal, local, so maybe schools are, are under that.
I don't know, yeah.
I'll, I'll see what I can find out about that one. There's, there's somebody at the state we can ask as well. And then the next section just goes into SEV in, well, the first table is the county, and then I've got the township. The townships are all on the graph, with the whole counties that we have. Looks like you guys are up there.
We're the highest on the county.
Yep, you are.
Total tax base.
Look at that.
I've been pondering that for years. We give more money to the county than anybody else, and we get the least services. That's my own opinion, I'm sorry.
That's right. You guys are this tall green bar.
Yeah, I mean, we have, our, you know, value of our property is.
This not, this is not, this is not taxable value. This is SEV.
SEV, okay.
Equalized value.
What's on our, what's on the report, the forty twenty-nine, is that taxable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you're kind of an outlier.
I mean, the city of Sheboygan is almost less than about forty percent of what we are in total equalized value of property.
Yeah.
And so I said, we, we're not getting our money's worth from the county, but that's my own opinion.
But the revenues are not off, are not based on SEV. They're based on taxable value.
Well, I think she's got the taxable value in here.
Uh, no, this is just SEV.
SEV, yep.
But there is a correlation. I mean, it's.
Well, yeah, I mean.
I think, I don't think the graph would look a whole lot different.
No, it wouldn't look a whole lot different.
The numbers would be different, but.
They'd all be the same, you know, the way they would look at taxable value versus equalized value, percentage-wise, the same.
I think we're very close to Benton Township. The two of us are pretty.
Taxable, yeah.
Yeah, we're very close.
Where's Benton Township?
That's along Lake Huron.
Corbin Point, we go, Benton twenty-three, east of Sheboygan.
We're very close in population and very close in taxable value.
Well, you look at their equalized value, and they're a hundred and sixty million dollars less than us, so I don't know how they're, I don't know, that's just been my opinion for the last ten years. You know, we get less.
You took this right off the state website, did you?
Yeah, I took that from Treasury.
Yeah.
When we talk about road money, or we talk about other money coming from the county, hey, we're the ones supplying most of the money. That's a political, I'm sorry, I shouldn't give a political statement, so. That's always been my bugaboo for twenty years.
Take the number and grab a stick, because there's a whole bunch of people in Tuscaloosa township that have been beaten on that one forever.
Well, I know, but currently, it doesn't do any good.
So.
Okay, so taxable value. So it says we're the second largest on tax, the next page is taxable value. Right, evaluations, taxable property value, nine point eight, ten point three percent.
Yep.
That's not lining up with what I, that's not lining up.
This is, this is taxable value, but.
Yeah, it's SEV still.
Is this, oh, that is, the topic says taxable property.
Yeah, that's just the same, that's just the chart for three hundred and sixty-seven million dollars.
It's showing the same chart.
Okay.
Yep.
I mean, we're way.
That's okay.
It really doesn't, that information doesn't really have anything to do with our.
Right, other than you know, like what you just said. That's what.
The road commissioner and the county commissioners here, you'd be talking about it.
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah, we fund the roads, we fund the.
You know, how you're gonna construct your goals and your master plan.
So you're gonna, you're gonna fix that, though.
Somehow we need to put that into the master plan, too, and the county, because the county will incorporate our master plan into theirs, so hopefully it gets into their master plan again, that shows where.
I'm gonna say you don't need the money.
We always need the money, but I'm saying, why should somebody else get, you know, they get all this grant money, and we get a little piece of it. Well, we should get two-thirds of it. Let's say three hundred thousand dollars they have in grant money they got from the state.
The road commission won't give you any concern, because when you plug your TV in, you're not paying gas tax.
And they don't, we don't, we don't support, the only, only way we support the road commission is when we vote for a village, because all of their funds are taken from gas taxes. That's the only way to see that.
Well, the road commission has their own village every three or four years, and we have to vote for it, but we don't get a fair share. It does not come out of the road villages. We just went through again. Okay.
And then the next page, Mike gave me this data for building permits, so I just included everything he sent me.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So I don't know that there's a, I don't, you know, I don't know if there's a story there. It seems pretty consistent.
There's a way you can look at it and compare it, but it was just, it was a lot, I mean, we show a lot of building going on in this township. That's what it is.
I guess that's the story.
I think if you look at the site plan reviews and the building permits at the county level, we're more than half of every, the rest of the county people. There's more activity here in building and site plan reviews, new businesses going in versus the rest of the county, too, so.
So the rest of the chapter, and you tell me if this, these graphs are valuable. This is the, these are the Muneatrix graphs that we, I download data, it's a, when you guys file your forms with Treasury each year, Muneatrix grabs that data and puts it into a database that we can subscribe to and then pull that data out easily. And so that's where this comes from. And I mean, a lot of communities say, yeah, we like to have our residents be able to see kind of how we, how we shake out, you know. So the first on like page twenty-four is, that's our entire region, okay? All those, when you see, green is good, red is bad, blue is in the middle.
I got it on my iPad, the colors, and it shows that we're balanced as far as revenues versus expenditures.
Yeah, if you look at just the county, I mean, if you look at the whole region, actually, our whole region is green right now. There's not, so this measures fiscal stress, and our, so I mean, that's kind of surprising, our whole region is green.
So we don't have as much debt as maybe some other areas do.
Right, and then the county is looking very green. It was back in two thousand and eight, it was.
No, everybody looked bad.
There's the blue, yeah. And then, then that page twenty-five just shows, you know, what Treasury does on file in terms of your, well, there's taxable.
There's taxable.
Yep. And then, you know, revenues, expenditures, and that's what the rest of these, so like on page twenty-six, and these are, like I said, these come right from Muneatrix, showing how it breaks down in terms of where your revenue comes from.
What happened in twenty fifteen? Where it shows revenue, it's way up. Was that when we got the money for the sewers?
Was that the sewers?
It could have been the sewers.
I think that was the sewer, because I looked at that, and I remember, that was my thought, too. It had to be the sewer money we got in for, that's why the revenues went up, because everything else was way below, and then all of a sudden, I think that's when the sewers came in, was twenty fifteen.
Sorry, over the month, yeah.
So it's just helpful, I think, for people that don't have the inside, you know, knowledge of the township finances to see, oh, this is, you know, this is where the majority of our money comes from, and then this is how it's spent. So yeah, in twenty fifteen, that's capital outlay, special items, that's.
Yeah, that was a sewer project we had.
And then that table on page twenty-seven is showing how you, your revenue per capita in terms of how you compare to all your other townships. So it's pretty high, like in Mackinac City, though. They're the outlier. They got forty-two hundred dollars per capita. You guys are way down at thirteen hundred, so you can't even come close to Mackinac City.
Well, they probably have a lot more businesses, too, than Mackinac City.
You know what? I have an extra copy. Would anybody like to look at the copy? We have an extra copy. I'm sorry, I didn't even think of that.
Yeah, here, we're trying to tell you what we're talking about. It's not as.
It's gonna be a test.
I would, I don't know if this will be on the website down the rile.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, you could put it up there. You could put the draft up right now if you wanted to, yeah. I mean, it's, we have some things to change.
I just, yeah, I don't know, just saying. I would, we would put it out there, just like we do the service.
Yeah, it's, it's all.
But does it have to go through the board, or we just go ahead and put this out there?
You could put it as part of our, our report that goes to the board packet.
Well, we've already passed that date. It was yesterday.
It was yesterday.
We're talking about next month for everything here.
But they, they might take something at the last minute. I mean, if you send it in today as part of our.
Well, let's do it, yeah. You have it online, Mike, don't you?
You have it put it in the packet?
Yep.
Yeah, I have it online.
Because I wanna put that, yeah, we have a couple of things I wanna put in there.
So the rest of the graphs are just showing, like, on page twenty-eight, that's showing the counties and how they compare with county fund balance, that's percent of revenue. Yes, Sheboygan County is up there at the top. And then the rest of the graphs are township. And the, the straight line across the graph is sort of what, what is an indicator trigger for financial stress. Okay, so you can see you guys are way above the indicator trigger on all of these.
We were.
If you look at, you know, page twenty-eight, twenty-nine, your line's going up and down, but it's not really different.
No, I, I looked at all that before, and it made a lot of sense. That we're financially, we were pretty well-balanced as far as expenditures versus debt versus income coming in, revenue.
You're balanced, and so that, so that's good. So Treasury's not looking at you saying, hmm, you need to come and intervene, you know. That's, that's my husband's job, by the way.
Oh, does he? Did he make?
Community that needs intervention.
Did they go to Detroit and put them on a bank deposit? The last page, you know, we could, you know, because as far as, well, the resources, I guess, are next, right?
Yeah, so yeah, there's that two thousand and fifteen. But again, it's pretty even. And then public safety spending, obviously, your police department is the majority of that public safety spending, and then.
But if you look at the crime statistics, they're way down.
Mm-hmm. Yep, really low.
Which means we're doing a good job.
Yeah, and actually, it's, look at how it's gone down from, you know, two thousand and eight. And I know, I can't get those, so I don't generate these graphs. They're auto-generated. I can't get those numbers to be any bigger both years. I don't know. It's really hard to read.
If somebody wants this one, I have it on my computer. We're gonna go put it online.
Chris, you're online?
You can have mine, because I have it, I've gone through it.
I think I've got it right here online, too.
I should have said it.
Yeah, so I was just.
That's easy.
Hey, you're on camera now. Don't admit that. Okay.
So you guys had, so Don, you did a presentation about the survey results already. So I'm not gonna reprint, I mean, I'm not gonna take you through that. You've been through the survey results already.
Right.
I would just like to talk about what, what stood out to you. You know, what, what are you seeing that you want to make sure we address? You know, I mean, that's a general statement. We can go through the questions if you want.
Well, there's certain things that we may wanna go through on here, too, but not everything. I mean, pretty much.
Well, no, we're not gonna go through this.
But the one thing, right off the bat, it talks about what, what three things do you like most about Tuscaraway Township? To me, that's the thing that you wanna look at for a master, long, you gotta keep, keep going with those things, like beaches, waterway, lakes, rivers, hunting, fishing, I think was number one. Small town, safety, friendly people, number two. Parks and recreation, trails were number three. Those were the three things, and those are the three things we need to keep.
So we need to focus on those when we're doing our goals.
Need to focus on those three things.
Our action items, we need to focus on those things. In general, though, the satisfaction for whether you satisfied with being here, owning a business here, is really, really high. I mean, that's, so if you add very satisfied and satisfied, you know, that's ninety-three percent. That's high.
And then the other thing, too, is the three biggest problems. The next thing, we need, we need to look at that, too.
All right, so let's get it. Hang on, I'm getting there. I, I have. All right, so let's get it, hang on, I'm getting there, I, I have the full results here, so I'm sorry.
I could, yeah, I could, this is where we probably could have put this thing up. Which question was that?
We look at the three, the survey that she put out there.
Which pages is this? I got it for here.
Oh, okay, that's what I did, I don't know.
The biggest problems that were slight.
Probably six pages back.
Okay.
Okay, well, the three things that, you know, that were disliked about our township, number one was politics, township, board, and government. There's a couple of them in the room here, I need to, get that, shortage of amenities, and that's always a big thing here, food, culture, shopping, and health.
So, I, and so I just summarized, like, out of the, out of the two hundred and eighty-six, one hundred and twenty-five said shortage of amenities, food, culture, shopping, and health. Um, I didn't go, I mean, I took that off of the, the questionnaire and coded it, so I wonder if I can bring that up.
So the other thing is.
Not in the same pages that you guys are. At least at the front of you.
Oh, you have that.
Should be the same one, that one she gave us at the meeting.
So obviously, you're not gonna address everything that everybody says, right, so we want to focus on those ones that she's identified as the top.
What, I, I guess I'm trying to get my camera.
No, it's okay.
What, what was that again, Dawn?
Hang on, I think.
Well, the three dislikes, we need to address those too, I mean, we can't address them all, because there's a couple of things that's not up to the planning commissioner to do.
It was question number nine, and so when I did, did I rank the?
But I think the one thing is shortage of amenities.
So which?
We could look at that in the, in the master plan.
When they say amenities, what do they mean?
Food, culture, shopping, and health.
Yeah, what he just said.
It's right here.
I know, I know, but I just think, I think about, I mean, think that we need to write.
It's red, so number two.
Well, if you go back into the detail, it might tell you what people are thinking, we need more restaurants, we need more.
So, so most, so on that tag, which was number two, so on that tag, I mean, it's high gasoline prices, one main grocery store, we need more development, there's a lack of restaurants, no to me, no true community spirit. Restaurants needed, convenience and of access to shopping, lack of access to outdoor youth activities, retail shopping, lack of food options. Um, they want better medical facilities, yard waste, garbage, large item disposal is, it's a long drive to Emmett. Um, healthcare, no laundry, trash, lack of good restaurants, so it's, it's, it's all over the map, but grocery store, um.
You know.
Not enough restaurants, adequate, uh, lack of adequate health professionals, no garbage transfer station, not enough places to eat, so it's.
So you can go through.
Yeah, so it's that.
Dawn did a good job of summarizing, trying to put it all in one shortage of amenities.
What I did is I took your answers, the answers and coded them, your tags on.
A lot of these things we're starting to address.
Yeah.
You know, in this township, we have some people coming in, hopefully, you know, add some more retail, a laundromat's been looked at again, that's something maybe we could put in the master plan to make sure the zoning is right for it. I mean, there's a lot of things that we can put in, just like we did the Village Center overlay district, you know, we kept that, so we can only have certain items in there, plus the Village Center. So you can bring, you know, laundromats in there or whatever, and like I said, smart growth is what we're looking for here, and.
I think some of it too is, when I look at these answers, some of it we're already addressing with Tony Boone and Nick in between.
Yeah, yeah.
Because really, if you look at our, what the restaurant situation is, besides the fast food places, right, we have Wilson's, that's open every day, um, you know, longer hours. But Christopher's shuts down at, you know, they're only open, two or three are done.
Wilson's aren't open at night, four nights a week either, so there's only two or three. But again, you're right, we are addressing it with Tony Boone, coming to town, Monty Black, I use his name, I think he's looking at, doing some things that, because there's a lot of, of, uh, things that you, you can do in this town, people are starting to look at that we could add, you know. You know, we're ripe for the picking, I guess, but we have to make sure from a planning standpoint, we just don't throw them hither and nither, and we put in, we don't put two restaurants next to each other that's supposed to sell Mexican food or something. I mean, that's the kind of stuff we'd like, I'd like to see diversity-wise, different foods, and that's something people are talking about, that I would like to see in the master plan.
Our biggest problem with restaurants is lack of liquor licenses.
Okay.
So, the, the good thing about the DDA is, uh, you can get a liquor license, uh, through the DDA one time for twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, but it has to stay in that building forever, it can never be transferred, sold, or what have you, but again, the, the biggest problem. Uh, and we, we got a guy over at, at a marina that wants to do something, he can't get a liquor license, so.
But isn't that state regulator, or is that?
Yeah, there's, there's only so many liquor licenses available.
Yeah, I know, so that's more than the state than it is.
Nobody's really saying, nobody's really saying, oh, they're saying lack of food.
Well, that's a lot of hurdles to go over, I mean, a lot of things people want to come in here and do, but again, between the state laws and ordinances and things like that, and so that's why we, we need to plan on our master plan. A good plan over the next ten years of different types of restaurants, uh, laundromats, things like that, so.
We had people talk to us about Mexican restaurants, because they can't make it without a little liquor license.
Yeah, that's.
Salty margaritas.
Maybe they get the one from the R and B, who knows?
So, if, if we look at, I want to look at question number, I think it's eleven, where they, where they're asked to rank basically what's a big problem, you know, what's a small problem, what's not a problem.
Oh, yeah.
So, when you're just given a limited number of choices, right?
Yeah.
So there, looks like they're ranking lack of affordable housing as number one. That's got the most votes in terms of people consider it a big problem.
Yeah, and that is not just our problem, it's all over, Petoskey, Traverse City, um, any place around here, affordable housing is a big issue, and I know, we'd like to do something, and the master plan for our zoning.
Yep.
Is maybe, you know, change some areas to put in affordable housing, you know, you gotta find a developer that wants to come in, and you have to be a friendly, you know, village or township to bring somebody in to bring in affordable housing. I know Mr. Kramer's been working on that a lot, and we're working with Sharon Lang at the county level too, so. Uh, hopefully, that's something we want to put in the master plan too, that we can, you know, designate certain areas to put in.
Denise, do you work with Grayling, City Grayling? When you're coming up, you get off seventy-five and you're doing the business route past the airfield, there was a big development of apartments going in, is that all affordable housing?
I don't know the answer to that.
Because that looks, it doesn't look like they're, it doesn't look like they're all condos, it looks like they're, they're apartments, it's quite a, a nice size development.
So that's, that's the type of thing, like, so, yeah, we work with Grayling all the time, so we need to find out, like, what steps did you take?
Yeah.
Right, to get those things to happen there, and then that's where we need to transfer that over to the action items, like, that was obviously, they've been successful. Grayling has been, and, and Gaylord also, has been successful, it's like, well, what, what did they do, and that's what we need to have as action items.
Are they doing PUDs, is that what they're doing?
In Grayling?
Yeah.
I don't think it's a PUD, I don't think it's, no. I don't know the answer in Gaylord, I, so I don't, it's funny, I haven't really worked with Gaylord, but now apparently I'm gonna be redoing their zoning.
But, you know, there is a lot of, uh, opportunities in this township for different types of restaurants, affordable housing to keep people in working, because you look at our, you know, people are complaining, we got all these people unemployed, well, they must be getting welfare, well, no. They're not getting welfare, they're just not affordable housing for people to live here, and I did a survey with people working at the gas stations and stuff for minimum wage, they can't afford daycare for their kids.
What's affordable housing anymore, what, what, what is the price point of affordable housing?
Affordable is not a good.
You're talking two hundred thousand.
You should be saying attainable.
Well, yeah, not so much.
I don't like affordable, because afford, when people say afford, I keep telling you guys, it's like the north end of Flint, okay?
The body level for four people is seventy-five thousand, so.
You're never gonna find that in anywhere almost.
Well, that's something we need to make sure we keep in front of us as far as our master plan, and again, that's a, a big.
It's a big one.
Item on the survey, just like short-term rentals and, uh, portable housing, we're on the same one.
You see, the next one is available housing, just having housing available.
Well, we had nine hundred and fifty, remember?
Yeah, no, they're not, yeah, so those two, those two questions, when I, what I did was I took, um, I took not a problem, small problem, medium problem, or a big problem, and combined those percentages, um, versus, well, not a problem. Small problem, medium, big problem versus not a problem, eighty percent.
Yep.
Eighty percent said that, uh, lack of affordable housing and lack of available housing were both eighty percent.
Yep, so that's gonna be a big one we've got to address, we'll have to have some really detailed action items about housing.
Well, and I know, it's, go ahead.
Oh, but they also said, in one of the other questions that we asked, they also said they didn't want mobile home parks, they don't want, uh, tiny homes, um, and they didn't want manufactured housing either, so, yeah.
Well, so there's some, yeah, there's conflicts, because here, they also say property taxes is a big problem, but what, we want all these services that they listed, so.
You know, Emma County has modular homes, and I was telling Mr. Kramer yesterday, drove out of Petoskey yesterday, and just between Oden and Lanson, there's a community called Conway Commons that are modular homes. And that's in Emma County, which they're apparently, and I know our county, uh, planning director's looking into reducing the size of a home, it's seven hundred and fifty or seven.
It's seven twenty.
Seven twenty, they look to use tiny homes here, so these are things that we're working with the county on, and I, we want to make sure it's in our master plan, that's something, when somebody does go to the county and say, hey, they got a site plan, and we say it's in our master plan, they would accept it, so.
I think the tiny home question was, we don't want them unless they're in a tiny home community.
Well, that's what, yeah, that's the thing you'd have to do, like this Conway Commons, they're back off thirty-one there, and they're, you know, there's quite a few of them, it looks almost like a trailer park, they're, they're, um, it's almost like, uh, but they're not a trailer park, they're double-wide modular homes. I have two on my street, so I mean.
I know, but you know, in Davison, the issue we had with the mobile home parks, we had mobile home parks, and that's what happens, that's where all the crime is.
Yeah, no, I know. Well, that's why you have to be. Yeah, but that's why you have to be, you know, do smart growth with those type of things. I know on Lippincott, they built those next to the seven-eleven up there, and they put in the, the housing for, and what do you call it, uh, low-income housing, their apartments, and that's where all the trouble was, because all the police were there all the time. So you don't want to go that direction either.
Did I just hear that they're removing the subsidies from the South Point apartment area, this is just a rumor, did anybody else hear that?
That's what the gal at the gas station told me, because she lives there, and she had told me that they removed the subsidies, the HUD has removed the subsidies to help pay for her, uh, housing there, because there was a lot of people, low-income people live in there. So I don't know how true it is, but that's, you know, at the BP station.
Because she might, they might.
I, that's all I can say, Mike, you know, so, yeah, so again, that's, that's HUD if they did, so, but again, that's a.
We have homeless here.
Well, yeah.
Our, our homeless club gave out food a couple of months ago, and there are still people with children living out of cars, we saw it.
That's everywhere.
Like I said, we had a, a gal named Angela, or.
Don't say it.
No, she works for the schools, and she came in, um, her and Grandma, Grandma Mavis, they, they do a lot of work with the kids.
Oh, is that your?
Underprivileged, no, no, her name, I can't think of her name now, but she was telling us, they're, all the kids are moving into different houses to sleep on the couches, and these are, she's only in the junior high and the, you know, elementary, the high school kids, you know, are, so we do have an issue, I think that's like that all over, especially with children, you know.
So what do you put first, what do you put first, it's gotta be wages, housing, which one?
So these are, yeah, those are big things.
We're identifying our, our biggest issues, I don't think, I'm just kind of, as you're talking, I'm going through these other survey questions, I don't think there's anything earth-shattering on the commercial services question, because we already heard all that in the individual responses, what they want in terms of, you know, commercial services that are missing. Of course, there's, every one of them got votes, but, you know, restaurants are the big one, and then retail.
Then you get the stuff about the parents of restaurant, of restaurant neighborhoods, and seventy percent of the residents said they agree that they're okay, so, that's something we, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of, I kind of, I'm just sort of trying to pick out the questions where something.
Yeah, and I think the things that came up in the survey, township board and the, you know, the different areas here, like the parks commission or planning, are looking at addressing those issues too, you know. So hopefully, we can get some things going on, again, it takes a lot of time and effort to get, money is a big thing to get this stuff.
Couple of general questions are just, I think they're overwhelmingly, yes, you should consider, you know, continue improving downtown, yes, you should promote tourism, recreation, nothing, just make sure to include that, but we're, nothing really to discuss there. The, the blight question, this is the one where I would probably prefer in your final copy, we don't give out addresses.
I got one you're gonna, no.
I don't, I don't think that's right.
No, I agree, I agree, that's why we, we debated whether to give out the complete survey versus, but if somebody foys it, they can probably find it out, so.
Um, but obviously, and everybody has blight, by the way, it's just not anything unusual, so, you know, you had fifty-seven percent say, yeah, they think blight is a problem here. And we, yeah, we knew when we asked that question, when we said, where, that we were gonna get some.
Most of those answers came from one location. We're doing a lot better on blight. Our police department's very aggressive.
See, that's the one thing, we have our own police department, and they're the forces of blight, and they, they carry more weight than just having a bomb that might go over and knock on somebody's door and say, hey, you need to clean it up, so.
And we don't want to get shot, do we?
No.
So the ones, the ones, uh, question, what commercial services do you feel are missing, that was another one, and, and again, that goes back to retail grocery and, and restaurants, those were the two.
Yep.
So restaurants were the highest.
So, let's talk about answers to the short-term rental question.
Okay.
Because this, you know, there was a lot of comments on that one too. We asked a couple of questions.
Well, most of the people weren't against short-term rentals, but they wanted some regulations on them, and that's gonna be the tough thing to do, so.
So I mean, that's.
I don't know if the county is still looking at, they were looking at a, um, possibly a, like a blanket ordinance.
No. No, I, I talked to Mike Turris from the county, they're leaving it to the townships to come up with their own, uh, short-term rental, and Chris and I have been working with BLPA, and we got nowhere with trying to get regulations and stuff, so. The one thing that Chris is chairman of is septic systems, that we're trying to work, and he's doing a pretty good job with the health department, um, trying to regulate houses with, with septic system, because you're only supposed to have two people per bedroom for a septic system, is that right, Chris?
Yep.
And we're trying to get the county, or county, the, the healthy, state health department to help enforce that. So, to me, that's one little thing we can do to help short-term rental regulations, the other stuff, that's gonna be a tough, tough fall, although we did talk to somebody yesterday that wrote the, uh, the ordinance for Petoskey and Point City. So you can do that, but again, it costs a lot of money, it's a lot of money to be made on short-term rentals, so.
Well, it would have to be, if you were gonna do an ordinance, it'd have to be police.
Yeah, so that's.
It would have to be police action.
You've got to have some type of registration program, somebody here to track it.
Yep.
I mean, don't get us wrong, we started looking at it last fall, but right now, we got other fish to fry, and I think if we can come up with a septic system program to start with, then maybe get a few, uh, because that's something, most of it is the police have to.
I actually think we should, we need to pay attention to what these people, I.
Yeah, I do too, but.
I've got neighbors that are hollering, because I don't have a problem at my house with my neighbors, but there's some that are a little, few houses down from us that have, have a short-term rental next to them that is out of control. So, and they are gonna be nasty and loud about it, they're mad.
Well, we published.
I think we have that in a lot of the neighborhoods in town.
We published in our newsletter, Fert Lake Preservations newsletter, and Chris helped write it, that, you know, this is an issue that you have to first work it out with your neighbor, you know, get, get to know your neighbor.
Well, you want to know what he was told?
I know.
I don't care.
Then you go, and the next step would be, Chris had four or five items that we.
Yeah, the last, the last you go really incinerates the neighbor, and that is, you, uh, file a complaint with treasury to see if they paid, uh, CINO tax, the due tax.
So I, I don't know if that's a government issue that we could, you know, work on, but it's something we'll look at, okay, we're not gonna not ignore it.
Yeah, because he actually told him, I don't care what happens up here, I don't care what happens up here, and so he was like.
The key is the health department.
Yeah.
You can't put sixteen people in a four-bedroom, and I've seen it.
Yeah.
Especially on the river.
Well, we have it on our street.
And I understand that, the, the issue is, is I can't even get the health department to come out and check a septic leaking, um, that we know is flowing into the lake, I filed a complaint. a complaint, it's one of our neighbors to the north.
Yeah, when do they, well, that, that may be during, the problem with our VRVOs is, is a lot of the weekend stuff, and there's nobody around, I talked to the health department several times, down on our road, you can smell septic.
Yeah.
And, but they, they show up Monday, and by then it's all.
It's all gone.
So, gone, and that is, that's the only thing.
Yeah, and for us, it was, I mean, it was, it's so bad that when they dump that, the chemical that you put in your toilet, your, um, RV toilets, they're using that, because we can smell it at the.
Well, there's a lot of things you can do. I, my thought would be, I think the big thing is if you look at Petoskey or Point City, or make them register.
Well, and I think that's.
The, the short-term rentals.
How was that going?
So then the health department could come periodically and inspect the septic tanks, or the police.
Well, after meeting with the health department the other day.
Yeah.
Uh, Kyle and Kevin, uh, we brought all this up, and their biggest problem is, they, they point the finger back, the township has to enforce, have an ordinance to enforce that, and I said, well, why can't you do it? Well, we don't have a police department. I mean, it, it's a continuous circle.
So, it's the.
Finger pointing.
But what happens if they go and find a house that should be condemned, you know, for septic or?
What do they do if, if there's food poisoning in a restaurant? Do they say, oh, there's nothing we can do, let it die?
Call the police, yeah.
Because we, we're not a police department, that, you're right, it's just an excuse.
So, that's, you know, I don't wanna get too deep in that now, but that's something we're looking at from the township standpoint and from Bert Lake Preservation, because we're looking more for the environmental side of the, uh, short-term rentals. There is the issue of the police side, you know, which we think, you know, needs to be addressed, but trying to get all these different regulations put in, there's a lot of money to be made at those things, so you gotta keep, you know, be careful. And there are townships, as you know, you said, have wrote, have written short-term rental ordinances.
Didn't you, you just did press deals.
Yeah, I did press deals, I think it's going fine, I mean, they're going out and finding them, and.
So, I mean, that's something we're not gonna bury, that's something we're not gonna bury, I mean, we can put in the, the master plan.
So, that's why I'm asking, like, you, you, people were saying, like, seventy-one percent, seventy, almost seventy-two percent said, yeah, we need to deal with, we gotta have some type of standard on parking issues, trash was one, a high one, requiring an annual license was about sixty percent of the people said that, um, adopt standards to regulate trespassing, so, I mean, there's, we gotta say something about it, and then the other thing is that you got this housing issue over here, you got this short-term rental issue, they are connected.
Yes, they are.
So, we can't ignore.
No, no, I know, and maybe like Petoskey, you know, they, they doesn't need certain areas for short-term rentals, and they only, we're only gonna authorize forty or fifty people to have rentals.
It's funny, because this, the, the results, that was not one of the higher ones that people said, because we asked about only allow it in specific districts, only twenty-two percent said that, um, an overlay district, only ten percent.
No, that's not gonna work, they're already out there.
Living total number, forty percent of people said that.
They're already out there.
And my, my son lives in a community that has a lot of, or he has a, he actually owns a short-term rental, and, um, they're, they have a cap, it's Lake City in Minnesota, they have a cap on the number of, of short-term rentals that, um, to protect, uh, housing.
So, your people have some place to.
Yeah.
Well, that's it.
So.
The rent, the houses that people used to rent, that they could afford, are now being converted to short-term rentals, so there's no, you know, it, they are definitely connected.
So, condos are, you know, are being sold down here on the river, and those may end up being short-term rentals.
Yeah, well, that's what we were, that's what Mike Turris.
The, the people that work in the restaurant aren't gonna afford those and live there.
Yeah, but with all the different ordinances and, uh, laws going out in the state now, because apparently our state legislature has kind of buried it now, now that we have a new house and, and the senate that, that's kind of died, I think, I think I read that from Jason's, uh, letter the other day, too, that's, you know, fires, because they was going the other way, they were, they wanted to give them more, you know, opportunities with short-term rentals, but again, I think the more pressure we get from the other surrounding districts, maybe we could mirror some of the, the different, uh, ordinances that's out there, but that's something that.
Well, if we don't, and all of the surrounding areas are having regulation.
No, I understand.
Then people who don't want to be regulated are all gonna come here, and we're gonna be, we're gonna have even more short-term rentals.
Well, that's, yeah, that's something we need to look at, so we need to do something
about it, how much we need to do, I guess, is, uh, you know, is the question, and again, there's so much money, we tried to do that in our subdivision, we had two or three guys who were attorneys that rent, you, you take me to court, I'll take you to court, I can rent, and, you know, the people on our street, they don't wanna fight, they don't have the money to keep hiring attorneys, but these guys make so much money off these rentals that they're willing to take you to court to prove that they can do that, so, but you have to be able to work with them first, and we're already talking to some of our neighbors. I know that guy's down from Molly's, uh, he's from Flintic Fireman, he's finally looking at who's he renting to and how many people he rents to, so I told Molly, you need to talk to, to him, you know, it's, uh, I think it was named now, but he was a fireman, he has that two-bedroom, but we have a few of those on our street, so first thing you do is you try to talk to them or call them, and say, hey, you got ten cars in your driveway, you need to get them out of there, you know, you can't have them, and they trashed the house, so, but that doesn't work, then you call the police, because Chris had a whole list of things you do with, you know, if they park on the street, those are violations of, uh, ordinance and laws that they do, it, you know, you shouldn't have to redo a short-term rental ordinance if you, you know, you're blocking the street, or you're parking on somebody's yard, or you're making too much noise.
Throwing trash, yep, ordinances for that already.
Yeah.
So, that's what you have to look at, I guess.
So, have other communities, what have they, that, where they put, um, short-term, uh, rental ordinances in place? I mean, personally, I feel like that the, having to register and requiring them to have a sales license, show me your sales license, I think that's, that is, the legitimate ones are gonna stay, and the ones that aren't are gonna stop doing it.
Well, again, that's something I think we, if, from our standpoint, from a master plan, we need to put something, like you said, seventy percent of the people want us to do something.
Something.
So, we can put it in the master plan, and it's up to the board to decide if they want an ordinance or something, you know, depends on how many people are coming to the board meetings and wanting.
Well, we got petitions, I mean, at the annual meeting, somebody turned in, uh.
So, again, that's.
Turned in that petition.
Well, that's something we're gonna put in the master plan. I know we met last fall, we had a couple people that came, yes, sir.
You have to be very specific, uh, what the penalties are in these associations. A friend of mine lives in another state, neighbor had trash in his yard, and he had twenty-three thousand dollars in fines. He paid the fines and told the association to go to hell.
You're gonna find that there, too, I mean.
And the trash is still there.
Yeah.
So, if you don't have something that can give, like Chris said, you don't have something with the teeth in it.
Well, we have the guy down the road that kept paying the fines and never cleaned up his place, and finally they cleaned it up, you know what I'm talking about? But he just paid the fines, they're gonna take him to court, and he didn't do anything. So, again, yeah, it's not, we're not gonna get it solved here, we can debate it all day, but that's something we're, we are planning to, to address in our master plan, okay?
Yep, and then, so just moving on, um, it looked like it was, uh, sixty-six percent said no marijuana, we did ask the marijuana question.
Right, and that's from.
Sixty-six percent no, so I don't necessarily think we need to, seems like we don't need to talk about that, unless you want to, tell me. Um.
She's skipping around.
Yeah, I am skipping around, I, I, well, I'm going through the.
No, no, that's okay, I, I, I've read through all this, so I pretty much know what you're talking about.
I skipped some that I know there was really nothing to talk about, so.
I mean, the county had a big meeting here years ago, before our planning meeting, about marijuana, and all the guys who wanted to have marijuana businesses here came, and they shot them down here anyways, because we had a vote on marijuana in the state, and Mike, you can remember that, and our township said no.
No.
So, that's what we were based on our reasons for on marijuana, then we got sixty-six percent of the people said no, so that's something we can get over.
Denise, can I ask you a question? In your experience, if people have instituted marijuana businesses in these towns, have you dealt a lot with them or not?
Yes.
And ha- has it been the financial, uh, windfall that they predict, or is, is that a lot of smoke?
Uh, so, only one community that I know of was like, you know, was, is Gaylord. They're having financial windfall from marijuana. All of the other ones are spending so much money in attorney fees that it, to me, they're saying it wasn't worth it.
Well, I was told Sheboygan had four or five, and now they're down to one or two, because they all can't make a living there.
Well, that's the other thing, too, is things are getting saturated, but the, but there's lawsuits, it's just every time you try to do anything, anytime you try to limit anything, there's a lawsuit, and it's, it's, it's not, so, I'm just telling you my experience with the communities that I work with.
Right, right.
It's not, it hasn't been good, okay? I mean, even one that, you know, it's special use, right? Everybody puts it in as a special use, and even when you have it as a special use, and this was a planning commission that it became marijuana business, and they had the residence was very close to a residential area, well, it was right next, adjacent to a residential area, and they had like a hundred signatures on a petition from residents saying, this is gonna affect our neighborhood, and here's why. So, the planning commission looked at all that, and they looked at standards for special uses, and they said, boy, it is really gonna make an impact, so it doesn't meet the standard, and here's our findings for why we think, so we deny it, they got, you know, taken to court. Well, we're gonna sue you then, because we think we should be able to work there, and they're, they're there now. So, even when you have standards, it doesn't matter.
We have enough issues, and it's time to worry about marijuana.
So, only Gaylord.
We still get calls about it.
Oh, I'm sure you do, yeah.
We still get calls, and I just.
I know, somebody came to one of our meetings, thought we should be able to have manufacturer growers here, because we can get so much money, but that didn't go over very well either.
So, the community, so I'm working with one community that has sixteen grower licenses issued in the township, and it's been awful. They, they haven't had nothing but issues, so, I'm not, I'm not taking one side or another, I'm just telling you what these communities have been, it's just watching them, it's like, this was not worth it, other than Gaylord. Gaylord's the one that says, yeah, it was worth it for us, we have a lot of money coming in, so that's the one.
So, how did Gaylord do it differently than the ones that are having all the problems?
I don't know.
I don't, they got about four or five, don't they?
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember exactly, I don't think they did anything differently, it's just, it's the community itself.
What about Petoskey?
Petoskey got Lou, or what'd they call it?
Cause they're just, they're at Loom or whatever.
No, no, they're stories there, so.
They're, they're building a new one, I saw a new one.
Yeah.
I think it's the, you know, it's the feel of the community and what the residents feel, and, I don't know, like the grower one that's having all sorts of problems is, it smells, I mean, it just smells, they can.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
And, 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 and it's, you know, it's farm fields, so.
Yeah, well, that's something I don't think we wanna look at right now, so.
They're not happy, so. Um, and then you're rating your satisfaction with your police, fire, emergency, and medical services, things, seems like everybody's pretty happy.
Well, yeah, I, I've been real happy with them over the years, a lot of the experiences I had, my wife's had with them, they've been right there in five minutes, no matter what, so.
Which, which, what question was that?
That was question twenty-nine.
Nineteen, we skipped over.
Oh, what was nineteen?
Nineteen was, uh, do you think the township should continue its efforts to improve the downtown core of Indian River?
Which was overwhelming.
Overwhelming, the people thought we should.
Yeah, so I think we need, we know where we need to go with that.
Yeah, so that's something we need to look into, especially with the overhead wires.
And the tourism question, and.
Yeah.
That's, you know, yes.
So, that's something we need to keep looking at, improving, improving the downtown core.
You've got your priorities right in front of you now, I mean, they decided it for you, this is what our priorities are, so that's really good.
So, that's something we wanna look at, too, so, okay.
So, and I, again, I'm, I'm, I'm kinda skipping some that.
No, no, that's fine, because, uh, we don't wanna hold you up too much.
So, question, I wanna go to question thirty, because that was the trash question, it's kinda split. I don't know that that helps you, it's kinda split.
I got, we had it, a few years ago, we had a question come before us about getting an independent, uh, or just a single contract hauler, or at least make it, break it down to neighborhoods, and everybody was against it, because they wanted to support the, the little guy, and I can tell you that the little guy called me and says, this is not fair, you're gonna shut me out of business, so we actually dropped it. I think within the last year, year and a half, he sold big time to GFL. They, all they, you build on a clientele basis and they sell it, and that's what the whole thing is about, and now, you know.
Our subdivision, where Mike left Stowe, Plymouth Beach, we had one of our annual meetings, because our road is, it's gonna be repaired pretty soon, and that was one of the things, we were hoping to have one trash hauler come down, but there, like Mike said, there were so many people though, said, well, I like so-and-so, because he only charges me twenty dollars a week, and I like PAC, because he only takes one bag and you put your name on it, and we couldn't come with a consensus of one hauler, whether it's Waste Management, GFI, PAC, or whoever these other guys are, so, it never went anywhere, so.
Well, my big issue with it is that I know what I'm paying, and I'm looking at my brother-in-law's taxes, who has curbside garbage and recycle, and that's Richfield Township, that's about twice the size of our township.
Yeah.
Yeah, a hundred and eleven dollars a year.
Well, I lived in Davison Township, and it wasn't cheap either, so.
No, that's cheap.
That's cheap, that's cheap.
Well, that's cheap, yeah. Well, no, I see what you're saying.
We're paying that in two quarters.
I thought you said a month.
Yeah, two quarters.
Five dollars is like sixty, sixty-five dollars, and that's a senior discount.
Yeah, I think ours is like.
Anyway, I just.
Well, so, I guess I'm asking, where, because more people said yes than no, I mean, it's not huge, right? It's not huge, it's forty, about forty-two percent yes, and thirty-one percent no.
I think, I think if you could quantify, uh, the, the damage it does to roads, because I think that's where the question always comes back to, is you're letting these big trucks come down.
Three or four different ones.
Three or four different ones, and that's, that's.
Three or four different.
We have four on our street.
Yeah.
Four different ones.
So, that has to go, but that, correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't that have to go, uh, to the voters?
Yep, I think that does.
I mean, we would have to put it on a ballot, so wouldn't, wouldn't we first find out what, wouldn't we first go out and get some quotes? Because I know, I know that, um, Richfield Township, their contract is renewed every three years, and I think they have GF, I think they have GFL, so wouldn't you go out and get quotes? This is what it's gonna cost you folks if you contract with one and then put it on the ballot?
Mm-huh.
Wouldn't that be the way to do it?
I think that's what we did with the recycling, didn't we? Do you remember, Jane?
Yeah.
Yeah, I went on the road.
Presenting our questions relative to transfer stations, garbage transfer.
Yeah, because we have to go over to Emmett's.
Yeah, you got a long haul, you could go over there.
Well, so, like, uh, when I'm talking about curbside, they have once, it's either once or twice a year, they have large items, you can put a couch out, um, and they will pick it up, they, that was included in there.
But they got volume, that's why it's cheaper.
Yeah.
They got everybody in the township, five, we got four or five different companies.
Well, Burke's got two transfer stations, and you pay fifty dollars a year, I believe that's the amount.
Ours is.
And you have to take your garbage.
Yeah, you take it.
And, uh, personally, I like doing it, because it's a communication center, you end up talking to Jackie, she spreads rumors, and, and you find out politically what's going on, but at least once a year, they have trash day. You can go as many times, you can bring But at least once a year, they have trash day. You can go as many times, you can bring a dump truck and take anything. And it's all, they've got all the haulers there, you can pack it and away it goes. I mean, I've seen people bring boats, and they just crush them right there. And it's, yeah, you, I, I look at it every Saturday between, uh, when I look at it, you gotta have someone that is there as an employee to manage it. Otherwise, you start having stuff falling out of the containers, things blow around, people don't recycle properly, that type of stuff. But, uh, it, it's almost a communication center. Everyone sits and talks to Jackie, and she spreads rumors.
But the majority of the people on the survey, they either didn't care, or they said no. So again, that's something.
Don't cares.
Yeah, most people don't care. I mean, if you looked at, twenty-seven percent said no, thirty-one percent said, or thirty-one percent said no, twenty-seven were no. So that's fifty-eight percent versus forty-two percent that said they'd like to see one hauler. I mean, that's, and I am.
If you put it on the ballot.
Yeah, somebody would have, you need a petition to put it on the ballot, so.
How much it's gonna be a month, and then they look at that versus what they're paying, they might vote differently.
Um, okay, but that's somebody's gonna have. But we can on a master plan, I don't think.
Well, you can say research, put it on, you know, plan, you know, put it on ballot, I mean, you can say something like that. It's not just planning commission, master plan.
But we got a lot of stuff that are less than fifty percent, we're not gonna put on, or put in our master plan either, so.
But we're counting the don't know or neutral as, as with the no's, those are those people that are like, I don't care.
Well, I don't know, what is the rest of the?
Shows up on the ballot, they might look at it.
Yeah, so something, hey, I'm paying four hundred dollars a year, but I'm gonna pay a hundred and eleven, yeah, I'm signed up for that.
Somebody would look, put it down there, if somebody wants to put a petition together, we would be, all, township would be open for a petition on the ballot, in the master plan.
Is that what you do? Mike, is that what you do, is you have to have a petition?
You gotta have our random, you know, I don't think, I don't know if you can do that by resolution.
No, I mean, the petition, do you put it on the ballot, or do you just, you guys just make the decision?
I'll get you a minute.
I'm not sure. Let me answer on that one.
Okay.
Well, you don't want GFI and Waste Management coming down on you either, so.
Well, we had that presentation from Republic, and I don't even know if they're still in.
No, they got bought up by GFI. So that's what I'm saying. Sir, go ahead.
I live over in Lake Boulevard, and, and we had four, uh, trash trucks.
Yeah, so do we.
And, uh, so they decided that they voted on a, a proper operator to run a thing. And a guy who had the leaky truck sold his truck to them, so the damn thing's still running up and down.
Yeah, so I, it's a.
I think we have that same guy.
Yeah.
He complains, he had the leaky truck.
Watch the oil list big by the mailbox.
Yeah, somebody's gonna get bought up, so, okay.
We'll, we'll come back to that one, okay?
The question right after that was about, asking about requiring trash to, trash bins to not be decided around days that aren't trash pickup days.
Yeah.
And you had fifty-two percent said yes, and thirty-two percent said no.
Well, that's, yeah, that's something, I don't, you put that in a master plan?
Yeah.
I mean, is that a blight ordinance? 'Cause we have them on our street too.
Be a blight ordinance.
But we have people on our street that, you know, weekenders, but I go next door and I put his trash bin back. People down the, everybody has, on our street, has somebody that takes their trash bin back for them. If they, sometimes they leave on Sunday, and they'll put it out till Friday. But then, you know, I say, "I'll put it out for you," so it doesn't sit and I'll turn it around.
And I can understand though.
There's my house where, yes, Jeff goes out, grabs their neighbor's trash bin, puts it up by their house, and then yells at me, because the guy left it out there, so.
There is, uh, and I can.
Oh, that's your problem with Jess.
I can understand why they do. I, I have a neighbor, and, uh, he's got a three, four-hundred-foot driveway.
Right.
So he stays down there and he just brings the garbage bags down. I think, uh, maybe not so much keeping the, 'cause I thought on sixty-eight, there's a couple of spots, and they build little shelters for them. So that might be a way to address it, is that if you are gonna leave it there, you have to have a shelter.
But then again, that's an ordinance really.
Well, I, I'm just, yeah, I'm just saying, it's.
I mean, we could say the township will address, uh, in the master plan.
The point is not saying.
Yeah, no, well, you know, something we'll put out there, no, we'll put, it'll be out there, so if somebody wants to do that. Just like I'd like to see, um, somewhere down the line, we get rid of the power lines on the west side of the road. But again, that's something we'd like to see, maybe we can get grants down the road, whatever, but I wanna put that on the master plan too. So put that on our CIP too, right? Okay.
Okay. People are satisfied with recycling methods?
Yeah, that's, that's been really wild, especially in the summer, sometimes you can't even get to a, uh, recycling bin.
Uh, I'm just going through the last few. Nobody, no, nobody knows if the cemetery's maintained. That's kind of a big don't know on that. But, but between the yeses and the noes, more people think it is than, than it isn't.
I think it is maintained somehow, isn't it?
I'm sure.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it's, it's maintained, but who?
It's a, it's, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough one.
Yeah, but I don't wanna put down there, like, I see it from a number nine toll at the golf club.
Yeah.
Quality of services provided by the township government looks like a bell curve.
It does, doesn't it?
You got your, your biggest saying adequate. So the poor, the, the answer of poor is thirteen percent, so, really, that's not a bad, that's not a bad percentage, okay?
So what kind of services are we talking about, though? I mean. No plowing and.
If people don't know, maybe that's what we put in the master plan, we wanna make people aware of the services the township provides.
Yeah, well, this is your next question too, you know, I mean, here you have stuff that, I, I think we do have that, uh, Straits Area Ride for people, for seniors. But it's something you've gotta schedule, I believe, I've never used it.
Yeah, we have a whole list of stuff they wanna see on there.
So there's lots of, so again, back to the property taxes are a problem, but we got two pages of services that they want.
Yeah, that's, yeah, you're always gonna get that.
That's okay, though, that's normal.
And how many, how much of those services come from the county versus the township?
I don't think we need to dwell on.
I mean, it comes from us.
Seventy-one percent of the people thought they were adequate or, or above, so.
But even if it's provided by the county, we contribute.
Yeah.
Because we are a contributor to the county's income.
Overwhelming, satisfied with the library?
Yes, I saw that again. She's done a great, depends on who the librarian is, I think, sometimes. She's done a great job over there. And a lot of people don't use the library, but the people that do are very satisfied with it, so I think that's something we should stay with, so.
So the recreation question.
Interesting, that's, that's really interesting.
Thirty-three percent say they'd like to see more recreational opportunities, forty-seven percent, or forty-eight percent, more non-motorized trails. Almost nineteen percent more motorized trails. And then twenty, twenty-six percent, I do not like, I would not like to see any more recreational development.
That has a lot to do with ORVs and snowmobiles going through town.
Okay.
And we've had that discussion about or, opening up everything, although it is open, I mean, technically open, but, uh, you know.
Yeah, when you're a resort town.
The trails question, though, if you take the two, combine the two, they're at sixty-six percent of the respondents want to see more trails. Whether it's a non-motorized or motorized.
That's both in the DDA and the Parks Plan, to extend the trail from the corner down here, perhaps across to the shrine, but down, down to Cooperation Park. And there's, there seems to be a problem with our recreational trails, there's a, there's a big gap, we can't, it's legislative, we, we cannot take ORVs on the emeralds. So you're kinda shut off from gas stations and hotels. And that's something I really would like to address, because I think it's, it's applesauce. You can't, if you come to, actually, uh, the expressway heading north, and you've gotta get to the power source to get your ORV fixed, you gotta put it on a trailer and take it the last five hundred yards.
Is that something that's in your recreation plan?
Uh, that is not, but it's legislative, and I've talked so many times with both the DNR and the state about, uh, how do we, how do we approach this, how do we do this? And that is, and then here it is, it said, "I'd like to see more, uh, non-motorized trails or recreational opportunities." I mean, that, it's.
Yeah, okay.
I use those trails. I don't think you need more. It's access to the trail.
Correct, correct.
It's like your lot of the trampuses, if they had two that went under seventy-five.
If you could connect, yeah, if you could connect Straits Highway to the township line, you could take Ranch Road down to Extension, or that extension, but that road that goes off toward Extension, it opens up the world. If we could just get that spur opened up between seventy-five and, and Ranch Road, uh, or, or actually the, the COP road. 'Cause then you can get on the Ranch Road, and if you ever taken back there with that two, that, that's road, but you go back and all of a sudden, you, you're off to twenty-seven, and you're beautiful door roads, and you're all the way to Shippensburg.
You know, in our last master plan, we have a whole section on recreation goals, and the same issues were there ten years ago.
Yep.
You know, as far as expanding, improve township parks, facilities serve the needs of residents and visitors, promote winter tourism. Work cooperatively with neighboring townships and counties, key stakeholders establish connecting bike trails and routes such as, uh, so we could just take this one again and put it in the left, I mean, we've done some of that stuff. But it needs to be, I mean, more and more people are coming up there, finding us, so.
Lockability is a big, is a big factor in drawing, drawing people. We, we talked about, um, down Chippewa Beach, connecting with the Green Docks to, there's three conservancy properties that have, um, trails, and, um, connecting them, somehow connecting them with a, a trail to get from town, the Green Docks, out to those conservancy properties. It's kind of a, and there's, I, I think, I think it's doable. Just because of the number of subdivision, un, uh, planted, undeveloped roads that could be used.
So what else do you think is on there we need to address?
Well, the next seven pages are a list of roads that people want to see improved.
Yeah.
So obviously, the, their answer is no, they're not happy with the roads.
Yeah, but then they're not happy with road millages either, so.
Right, so that was.
So, yeah, they wanna improve, but where do you find the money for all these roads?
At a half million dollars a mile.
No wayfinding signage was no. Don't need no more wayfinding signage. I don't know.
Got enough signs.
I guess you got enough.
Yeah, most people don't want a local road millage, so you gotta figure out ways to fund these things, okay.
Public transportation, are they, is it adequate, most people say?
They, they don't care.
They don't care, I mean, that's, don't care or don't know.
Well, yeah.
There really isn't it, isn't it?
You can't call an Uber, we've had friends come up here wanting to call an Uber one time. I just called an Uber to go, I said, "No, no, you're on," so.
You can call, but you might have a long.
Yeah, you might have a long wait, so.
Not a lot of feedback on the airport property, which is fine. Are there adequate job opportunities? Of course not, right? We knew that was gonna be the answer. It's not, not adequate job opportunities. I found that, this is an interesting one, if you're gonna locate or relocate a business, would you locate it in the township? It's a split between nos and yeses.
Well, that's the thing we have to work on, both the chamber and the township board planning, to make it inducent for people who wanna come in here.
You know, the other problem, I don't mean to interrupt you, but the other problem, when you start talking about affordable housing, is workforce housing.
Well, right.
That is, I mean, you can't just say, "Okay, I'm gonna re, I'm gonna retire up there, but I wanna pay five hundred thousand dollars for a house."
Right.
But you have people who, who need to, to work here. We had an opportunity, not, I should say, it looked, it was a slim chance, but they talked about bringing roughly three hundred jobs here. And it's, it was just ludicrous, because you couldn't find thirty people that could live in town and work there.
So I, so I've often asked this, and this, it comes through my mind, we have empty subdivisions in this township. There are subdivisions where nobody's building houses. I don't know who owns.
You know how much it costs to build a, a, a house these days? How much, how much a square foot?
I don't, I, I don't know, so what is it, about a hundred and seventy-five a foot?
It is?
It's close?
Hundred and seventy-five, two hundred thousand square foot.
Yeah.
Not unless you got brought in main construction.
Okay, we, we threw the survey?
Other than that, you know, yes.
You got your notes of things that we.
Make favors to activatements.
That's interesting, because there have been people who want that addressed that have come to town, "Do you have any tax abatements?" We've always got, uh, pushback from the business people here about it. But that is something, uh, I did talk to NLEA about it, they would help us, they would just gotta have a discussion about it.
So our next meeting, I've got the email you had on here, I don't know if that's still true, about what we'll do at the next meeting. You said we would review goals and objectives, implementation table, this usually takes those a long time.
So, yeah, but I need to do a lot of work first.
Yeah, yeah, no, you tell us.
Actually, before I do that, though, I wanna get those other background chapters done, okay? 'Cause I want you to have the complete picture, so, um, I'll let you know when those are done. We, I wanna do the goals last. Not that I think, like, your natural resource stuff is gonna, it's not gonna change much from your last plan, but I want you to have it at least.
Okay.
So do we have to, uh, say, oh, oh, yes or no, we're okay with this now, or do we?
With what?
This chapter?
No, 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 because I think we're gonna make some things.
And the stuff we thought we wanted to see.
So you're gonna make the changes.
And then we make some changes, if we think of other things that we wanna add, that's not fine, nothing's final till it's final.
And you want that put in the consent agenda? Was that what you wanted me to add?
It's part of the report, yeah, it's part of the report.
And then, and then you guys can put it out on the, on the planning commission website?
Yep.
So.
Just that it's, you know, it's draft, so.
So the next, the chapters, the one, the next ones I'm gonna send you, I can't tell, I can't tell you the date right now, we're, we're a little behind, but we'll.
That's fine.
It's been a little, this fall has been a little.
Wonky?
Yes. We have new, well, you know, Diane retired, it was, we had some stoppage of work for a while, 'cause we all had to get oriented again, but, the next chapters, though, you, I want you to look at without me here, 'cause I don't wanna, they're not chapters that I need to be here for, it's just like, what is, is there anything wrong? You guys go through them, I don't wanna waste one of our meetings. We only have four, right? I don't wanna waste one on the background stuff.
Okay, what is first chapter again, as background?
It's just introduction and, and like, status of planning, yeah.
Okay, and then three was?
Three's probably community services, and then four is usually natural resources. Five is existing land use. So I will send you at that point, I'm gonna send you a large map, to make, 'cause I'm gonna do the existing land use, then have you mark it up if you see mistakes. Okay, and then, um, then, the next time I'll be here is when we go over the goals, and then the one after that will be when we do the future land use. So we're looking at those maps and seeing if you want, and I know you already, I already know you want changes in future land use, 'cause I'm sure that doesn't reflect what you, so that's gonna be a work session, and sit around the table and really mark up a map. So those are my next two meetings. So the next, the next couple probably that I send you material for, I won't be here.
Okay, no.
You just tell me what's, what's wrong.
Yeah, and we'll feedback to you, and then when you, okay, yeah.
So that's the point.
So we'll just wait for the full signal?
Wait for me to, I'll start giving you one at a time, I'm not gonna wait till they're all done and send them all at once. I want, one at a time, so you, you know, if you have time to review it, then you can.
And you got a, a link I sent to all the members and to you for the photos that you wanted, the thing, okay?
That was wonderful.
The only thing, I mean, any of them that you think would fit, this, this particular one is a nice photo, but the parks used the same one on that one before that. So we don't wanna use this.
That's where I saw it. Your, your, your recreation plan?
Yeah.
I did that.
Yeah, so if.
That's, that's where I saw that photo before.
So you must have had that photo.
I did, I already had that photo.
It's a nice photo.
Yeah, no, I can change that. So who do I credit for the photos?
Um, well, no.
No? I mean, if you don't want me to credit anybody, I don't have to, but I thought if.
Well, Pat did, the drone shots were all from Pat's photos, so, you, if you wanted to do that, you can do those.
He's saying no.
He's shaking his head no, so that's all.
All right.
But there was a number of drone shots in there that show the downtown area and the river and the.
Those are great, that's exactly what I'm looking for.
So there's several ones you could choose from there, so just, whatever. I don't know if you wanna look at them here and make any suggestions or whatever, but you've got them, we've got time to figure out which ones you wanna use where.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for coming this week, I'm glad the roads are better.
Yeah, me too.
So our next, our next regular meeting, the regular meeting is April twenty-seventh, is that, um, too early for?
I don't know, this is gonna depend on.
Let's just play it by ear, we can always change it.
Okay.
I mean, we're probably gonna meet before then anyway, so she brings us this stuff, so, then she'll tell us when she's ready, then we can pick up on.
So this workshop date is something we're gonna talk about?
Yeah, that's, that's, that, that's to do with.
The workshop with.
No, no, not with her.
Oh, that's our workshop.
That's, that's with the capital improvement plan.
And that's before the April twenty-seventh meeting that we have?
Yeah. We were gonna talk about it, they, they should go with the CIP stuff. Should've been with both. Okay. Thank you, Denise.
Thanks, Denise, good to see you.
So what do we wanna talk about next? We got the.
You wanna do box letter, or you wanna do, uh, 'cause you've been sitting around talking.
Yeah, Bob, did you wanna talk about the support letter? We're not gonna do it, you said, for a while, but you, did you wanna give us an update?
Yeah, because I just heard from Congressman Bergman, that's why I had to step out. Just to give you some background, Senator Peters came to us, we didn't come to them. And they thought that the job we did in the FY twenty-two submission was so good, they wanted to know if we had any similar projects. So we went out and met with them, and then we got a call from, uh, Senator Stabenhouse's aide, and she's on board. And I just talked to Bergman, and they're on board. And we may be the, as of now, we are the only one that General Bergman has. So he gets twelve. So, uh, one of the recommendations from all three of them was keep it scalable. So even though the project's six point five, the engineer tells us we can expand the plant for one point five. The modular concept, but it's a little higher than normal, 'cause we're gonna have to expand that drain field, what do you call that?
We, that's drain field, that's a, yeah.
So, um, what I just got from General Bergman, unlike the senators, they want resolutions from boards and commissions. So our, our, now, I'm just assuming that the Board of Trustees is gonna approve us filing these applications. So I don't wanna get out of myself, be accused of, you know, having this a done deal, but if the Board of Trustees on Tuesday night says, yes, you can, the SuperSub Committee can, um, apply for these funds, we would need, uh, support letters, uh, from various organizations. Janet is gonna take care of the OPA, um, to the MIT, uh, I already contacted NemCOG, she's gonna take care of our state senator, our state rep. Sharon Lang's gonna help, and Jeff Lawson's gonna help us with the commissioners. So, eh, if you do a letter, that would be fine. I just texted Janet and asked her to get a resolution done for the board, 'cause before it was just support letters, now we need.
So you have a, I know you sent me some examples of the support letters, do you have a, you know, like a format you want us to use? Or when you guys get it all approved, we can.
I, I, I'll tell you what, I'll just have Janet draft it for you.
Okay.
I, I'm doing the, I would do the application, she's in charge of the support.
Okay.
Is this FY twenty? Is this FY24, 23?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Okay.
The other notes I got for you, just real quick, because I was taking notes. One of the big things for this, what they call scalability that they're going for now, is we talked to them about us being at capacity in July, especially in August. And yeah, we can slow the pumps down, and we'll get through until, you know, we can get an expansion. So we're looking at like, possibly, in addition to the VA clinic, nineteen additional condos downtown, forty additional washers, after talking to Monty yesterday about this, because I had to get a handle on what he's trying to do. So what we really want to do, and what I'm asking the Planning Commission to do, is address capacity. We're at capacity. I confirm that with me and Hunt. So it's a really, really big deal that just, for example, Melissa at Stabenhouse office said, well, isn't your system only eight to ten years old? And I said, yes. But we've expanded it to Burt Lake State Park, blah, 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 blah. And we, at times, are at capacity. So that's going to work in our favor, because they see it as an investment already made by the Congress that is expanding. And that's a good thing. The other thing I've got to determine, but you don't need to put this in your letter, is if we could do Phase One, Two, and Three plant works all at the same time, would we save nine hundred thousand, or would we save an additional four hundred and fifty thousand? So I just wanted to bring it to speed.
Okay. So you're going to let us know about the letter and what you want us to get?
I will have Janet send it directly to you.
Okay. We'll take a look at it in one of our.
And you make any changes you want.
Okay.
Because I, I don't think she knows how to tie to the master plan like you do.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Do we want to talk about how we want to attack the
CIP?
Capital Improvement Plan?
I just gave you a, did I give to you?
Yeah, you gave me the list of stuff.
We got less, too? And what there is, what the parks has put in their five-year plan, or ten-year plan, and the DDA, five-year plan, and the DDA has put in their plan, will be just ideas for different infrastructure projects. And I think the Planning Commission and the Township Board would have opportunity to, to add more projects and then start prioritizing. I think we heard tonight about just the non-motorized path down to Cooperation Park. That's, that's one, that's covered in both of them. I believe the DDA and the parks have talked about a walking bridge over the Little Sturgeon, which would hopefully open up that, eventually open up for more dockage down there, on our way road and, but now it's the tube. Those are just examples. I mean, you can look, some are specific to the parks and recreation. The other ones are specific to the DDA district.
Do they have telephone poles on there?
No, that, that's a good one to put on there.
The reason I would suggest that is according to Senator Peters' office, that could qualify.
Yeah, I think.
And she suggested 2024, because, see, with the sewer thing, we're ready to go. We got all the written stuff done, right? So we can get it done in less than two weeks. If you want me to submit on your behalf of the utility poles, I'd be glad to do it, but I couldn't get it done in time.
Yeah.
But she said under the community.
Like, community, community facilities.
That is the.
So you say you put in a form like this, like the county did, you sent me?
I would just have it there. So in 2024, when we go forward with Congress, you can say that, you know, that's the top of the DDA's list, and it's in the, it's in the township's capital improvement plan.
So the capital improvement plan, just to clarify it, you want everything that's in the 23 to 24 budget, or you want stuff to go outside?
No, it's six years.
Okay, you want the six years?
Six years. But it's got to be simple, okay?
So each one of these, the parks plan and the DDA plan, construct, each one of these, like, construct new restaurants, has to be on that separate form?
Yeah, this separate form, correct? Yeah.
For you guys.
Yeah. Rest of them, they need to transfer it over to it. I know Bob talked about the.
The parks needs to take each one of these things and give it to us on one of those separate forms.
Exactly, that's.
And the DDA has to do the same thing.
Exactly.
Right.
And the shorter the better.
Right. And then we prioritize those.
Yes, and we put it, I would assume we put it on a separate sheet. Say boom, 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 boom.
I took titles, and for each one of these, there already is a little short paragraph or narrative.
Right. But I mean, we need the parks to give it to us on that form.
Right.
Fill it out.
And here's why, if you don't mind me.
No, no, go ahead, Bob.
Here's why. If you go to their five-year plan, there's stuff in there that even I don't understand, okay? Like TBD, right? I, I can't extract that for them.
And we can.
We, yeah, that's, that is, I put that down tonight. Convert.
It's up to them.
Yeah, right.
Don't do people's work for them. If they have an interest, they'll do the work. If they don't want the money, they don't get the money.
I'll send this out. I think Bob sent this to me yesterday. This is the county's CIP plan. And it's pretty simple. They list everything they want, and each one has a separate sheet, just like we talked about.
What we need to do is send out that form, like I, I sent you, here's what we need to do. So we need to send it to the parks, to the chair and the DDA chair, saying we need, in this form that's attached, fill it out for each one of your things, and send it back to us with a date. And we need it by April 1st at the latest.
We want to have a workshop next week? Do you think that's, wait, you want to wait?
Well, are they going to have any of those forms to us?
I don't think they will. But we're, we can talk, we're talking about it now, so.
Can I make a suggestion? Your liberal poll ought to be, just like the county, name and cost, that, title and cost, that's it. That's the.
And they're supposed to provide us.
That way the sheets can be referenced later.
That's why, he gave me the cemetery, he gave me Devoe Beach. These are simple things.
We can't take this and fill out the form for now. They need to give it to us.
And what we'll do.
Something else you can consider. You don't have to go, if you, you have all the discretion in the world. You don't have to go one, two, three, four, five. You can go high, medium, and low, because it depends on different funding sources, for example, right? The source of funding doesn't really matter. So you may be able to execute three I's at once. The county, they just do one, needed, and everything that was wanted, they eliminated it altogether.
They, I'll send you this. They've got eight items that's needed, and they list them on their, their letter page. And then they attach each item by one pager.
And the, and the one pagers are what we get from the.
What we'll get back from them, and then we'll do a summary, and we'll say, this is what we think is needed, this is the priority.
Right.
But there's a downside to having only eight. If you have every major project that these folks want listed somewhere, then I could reference it in a grant. I can reference it in a congressional request. You can reference it in a Sparks grant. People like to see that, because you can explain, we held a public hearing. The community, every time I get one of these, we have to demonstrate broad community support. So if it's on the list, it's really going to help.
Well, I think we need to get that information out to the parks and the DDA and the admin, because some of them will be coming in from the board itself.
Yeah.
And get that out and have a date on there that says, we need this by this date, so that we can put it together and get it by the 15th of April.
Yeah, I got one already that I just wrote this morning, six one five million.
What we need to do then is get a copy of the form, you know, PDF template, and then an example, huh?
Not a PDF.
Whatever, I'm not a.
Word doc.
Word doc. I'm sorry, word doc.
I sent it to you.
O, O, and E, or whatever it is.
Mike, I sent it to you, but I'll send it again.
Yeah, send it to me. And then the form, and then.
I'll send it in Word and Google.
And Jane, and you, I'll have you send it off to the entities, because you had a list of everybody we needed. But I'll send it to you. I'll also send everybody what the county did, that Bob sent me, which simplifies it, because we were all over the board trying to figure out what to do. And I think it makes it a lot easier for us. And then I think we should wait till we start getting them back before we have a meeting. Maybe.
Right, we have nothing to.
No, maybe three weeks or so. We'll see what we got. Then we'll do a workshop.
What date do you think we need to have it back in order to schedule a workshop, put it all together, and meet the April 15th date?
I would think the, you want it back by April 1st?
Well, would that give us enough time?
I would think the last, I'd say, a week before that, March something.
Hey, look, I, I can't speak for the whole board, but Mike, you're probably going to agree, this is the first time we're doing this. If it ain't happening on April 15, that ain't no big deal, as long as it's not June 15.
Well, we'll, we'll have a look at it. I know we're going to get some pushback from people.
Give yourself some slack.
Okay.
But we need to give them a date, so that leaves us enough time to have a workshop and work with it.
Let's do the workshop around April 1st.
The workshop will be April, so we need the forms.
Michael Ridley, yes.
Go ahead. The DDA is requesting a roundtable with you guys to discuss some of these things, and I'm sure the parks could be a part of it, the township.
That would be something.
Doesn't the parks have a workshop meeting coming up?
They had, they had requested one, and the DDA just at the last meeting requested, but they want to get, they know that's about the CIP, and they want to give their input to you.
Can't we just use that? Can you ask them, can you ask parks if we can make that the?
It's probably too early, because theirs is on the ninth.
Ninth of March?
Yeah.
I, I think that's a great idea to get, like I said, get all the entities together and let them give us their stuff in the format that we look at, then we can question them then. Maybe, you know, the 18th or end of March, we can get them all together, give them time to put it together, and then have a meeting with all of them together and go through what they got. And if we have any questions, and why you have stuff, huh?
March 24?
Yeah, I know, I'm just throwing stuff out.
Bob, is the, just to go back track, is what you're needing for the congressional spending, are you, is Janet going to make up a resolution, or do you just need a form letter?
For the Planning Commission, Janet will make up a form.
Of the condo.
And we'll look at.
Or ask her to make up a board resolution. And Jeff Lawson and Sharon Lang are already working on commissioners.
The 29th, maybe the 29th.
Okay, then we'll take a look at it. If we need the wordsmith, then we will get it back. We'll use ours as our point person. Okay, sounds good. Okay, so the TBD for the workshop.
Oh, one other thing, library. They're separate. We got it.
Okay.
They have their own village. We got it. But by the same token, I think it would be a mistake not to include them. The county, for example, will not include the road commission or the airport authority, because they're separate, kind of like our library. But by the same token, it's not going to hurt, in my view, unless it's going to piss them off.
Well, we can connect with them and ask them, because I know there's an issue with some land, too, here, so, between them.
I know they got a project out here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. There's an issue there. So let's, maybe, Mike, did you touch base?
Yeah, I'll talk with Kelsey and.
Okay.
It'd just be nice to have one community list. You know?
So we're going to go out to.
Here's what the Planning Commission thinks our community needs for the next six years.
So, so this letter, or this email, is going to go out, it's going to go out to DDA, it's going to go out to parks, it's going to go out to the airport, the library, and the township board. Correct?
Who else do we have?
Did I forget anybody?
Police.
Police Department.
How about the fire department?
No, they're not, no, they're not.
Okay, I, okay, I'm just throwing that out.
Oh, they're a separate.
They're a separate entity.
Okay.
That's too bad, because there's a bunch of money available.
Well, they probably, I'm assuming that they're getting some of that. I mean, I'm assuming that, I don't know who owns them.
They own the, they're a 501(c)(3).
Okay.
Okay, so Jane, I'll send you the, the two forms that they need to go out to those different groups, and then we'll wait and see towards the end of the month and have a meeting with all of them before we pull it all together. See if we run into roadblocks, too, so.
What, what date do you want me to put in the email that goes out, that we want the forms back by? You're sending it out, when are you sending it out? Give them two weeks. They have a meeting on the ninth. Okay, today is Thursday. So if this goes out tomorrow? Yeah, they have a meeting already on the ninth, right? They have a meeting on the ninth.
20th, I think.
The 20th.
How about the week of the 27th, just before April?
Yeah. So we need it back by the 27th.
I don't need to be here, but I'm going to be here.
Okay. I'd say make it the 27th.
And they can argue their point, I guess, when we use that, so. Okay. All right.
All right, so the workshop, we're tabling?
No, we'll, we'll table that till we, we can get back together with that later on.
The vacancy?
All right, let's talk about the member vacancy. We need to, Mike has some applications.
And three applications, one withdrew. We've got two good applicants and Chris.
And there's one good, I don't know if I can.
And Lisa. And one of the, the criteria in Planning Commission is to try and be inclusive to the different parts of the township. I talked to Chris earlier about this today, because we may be having an opening coming up, and he was, he said I could hang on to his application for the next opening. So I would recommend Lisa Schofield. She's the former owner of.
I've looked at her resume. I think she would make a good, I mean, we would recommend, but you, you have a final saying to the board.
I still like your input.
Yeah, I would say, yeah, because I know the bylaws state, we need somebody from each region of the township. And she would be the right person compared to what I could get.
We had two, we had Craig Walden for years from over there. We had Mar, Mar.
We had Francine over there, too. She was over there. So we always.
But we don't have right now.
No, but we need, so I, I would agree with Mike. I would recommend that he contact.
And then we have two terms expiring in September of 2023.
Who is that again? Is that John Shams and Kelly?
And Kelly Ashford.
So we have, yeah. So I know Chris, as long as he stays active, he would be an applicant for the law. But we'll have to go through the same thing, send out a, you know, put it out.
Can we talk about that? I think if John or Kelly don't re-up.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to go out again like we did, especially if we have somebody from the West Side now, then we can be open to both ends of the group. Okay, one thing we didn't do, we didn't approve the minutes from.
I was going to, I mentioned that.
Two twenty-three.
Because, so normally, we, you do the minutes at the next regular meeting, so.
And that's what this is.
No, this is a special meeting. So usually, it's the next regular meeting, so.
We can't add it.
Oh, that's, okay, so.
Yeah, it's the next regular meeting. So April 27th, I'll have all the minutes from the special meeting.
Okay, you'll have everything, just like we did before?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so do we have any public comment? Beth?
My question. You stated that you didn't want three Mexican restaurants?
No, I was just kidding. Not kidding.
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
But why don't we have a three coffee shops within block?
Can I, can I just, we really can't control that. If three Mexican restaurants come in on, on our street, we can't control that. We can't control if three coffee shops.
We would suggest, and that's why we would hope like the Chamber or the old Tourist Bureau would go out and, you know, around and say, hey, we've got some spaces in our town. Be great if you put in a Mexican restaurant, an Italian restaurant, or a.
Chinese restaurant.
Chinese restaurant, I would like to see. But we can't, again, we can't.
You can all buy them, Mike.
But we, but we can't tell them what to do, as long as they meet the criteria.
My other question is, when you guys were going through the survey, there was seventy, I think it was seventy-seven percent, or seventy above, stating they didn't, they wanted something done about the rental.
Yeah, short-term rentals.
And you made a comment that, well, they have to bring it to the board. And I, I guess I don't.
There has a, only thing we can.
I thought them doing the survey is bringing it to you as a board, and you as a board to the township.
All we would do in the master plan is put it in the master plan. So if someone comes up with an ordinance, it's already in the master plan, it's been approved to look into doing something, short-term rentals. I mean, it's like when you put together an ordinance for the Village Center, and somebody wants to put in a laundromat in the overlay. Can't do that, because it's not in our, it's not in our, you know, master plan. That's all That's all we can do as a planning commission, is say, hey, township board, this is, you know, 70% of the people want some kind of regulations on, we put it in our master plan, it's an issue that we need to address at the township level. That's all we can do, right?
It's like a goal statement.
It's a goal.
In my opinion, you made it sound like we had, the people that don't want the, have to now go to the board, because we submitted it to you, and you want to table it.
I apologize if that came out that way. All I was saying is that we would put it in the master plan as an issue. But again, you'll need an ordinance. And to tell you the truth, the guy that did the ordinance for Petoskey and Boyne City, he's our attorney now. So that's just another story. And he did a good job, so I'm just saying, it's something you got to, Beth, we're on tape, but it's something you have to gradually push, because there's a lot of politics in that.
Well, I understand that, but I just, the way it came across to me...
No, I, that's not what I meant. No, 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 no.
I see a lot of things get tabled.
What I'm saying is, we've got a good start with Chris and the septic tanks. If we can get some regulations on people with the septic tanks, that's one step forward. We get more awareness by the police, you know, the people, it's got to be police by the neighbors too. I mean, they have to call the police or tell the owners of the thing. That's the first thing we put in our newsletter about short-term rentals. Try and find out where does the owner live and call him. I know the guy across the street from me had his mailbox taken down last weekend, because there were four snowmobile trailers parked at a rental. And so he called the police first. Gordon came out, gave him a, you know, gave him a police report. He called the owner. You know, he had the guy's number, and all the neighbors have this guy's number. And said, hey, your renters, you know, they tore down my mailbox. And he had two or three witnesses that saw him there. And first thing he said, I got a police report. He said, I have somebody out there tomorrow to fix it. So again, that's just things that we, from Burt Lake Preservation, when we looked at it, we couldn't regulate. We can, you know, we can't legislate, we can educate, and that's what we try to do. But from the county or township's issue, they can write an ordinance similar to other ones. Like I said, we get most of the townships around us, and, you know, Denise wrote ordinances, the lawyer for the township. This is going to get to a point where it's going to be a lot of pressure on people to do something about short-term rentals. Whether it's just some kind of regulation or not, you know, that's something that's got to be, yeah, Chris.
As a planning commission, don't you present proposed ordinances to the board as a planning commission?
Yeah, I think the procedure, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, would be to have the general outline, and then you'd be, because you don't want to go through all the, all the expense of creating ordinance, and all of a sudden the board says, no, we're not going to do this. Want to make sure we're both on the same page before we start investing in it.
Well, it's like we did the food truck ordinance. There was a need for it, the board was behind us at the time, because we had board members on the planning commission too, but, so we, we did the food truck ordinance, and we kept the board locked up. They have to approve it. So yeah, we can put something together, and that's something, maybe that's what we'll look at when we're getting done with the master plan, is come up with some kind of ordinance, you know. But again, it may or may not get thrown anyplace. It's a different role today than it was six months ago. We got the food truck ordinance done. I mean, Dawn did a great job pulling that together. The county's using our food truck ordinance now, because they had no food truck ordinance. So yeah, that is a good point that Chris made. Something that we could look at, and we would take a look to see if that's something that's worthwhile to spend our time on. You know, if they get another legislative act come through, and they say, you know, you can have short-term rentals all over the place, and, you know, we can't do anything here. But we're trying, you know, from around the outside, with Burt Lake Preservation, trying to come up with some other ways to stop people doing stuff. But you get an ordinance on that, that's going to cause a lot of issues from a lot of people, so...
But I agree with you, but I got to tell you, I've never had an issue in this township in 14 years, and, and that has posed so much of a challenge to people's quality of life.
Yeah, I know.
People come to talk to me, and I'm not just talking about how people are upset because they leave their garbage out. I mean, I'm talking about coming to physical blows with the people in the house next door because they're, yeah...
I'm all for it, one, but I, we have to be politically correct too when we go forward